This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I just want to welcome everyone to today's meeting. If you are in the audience today, just make sure you've got your phones on mute, please. And if you would like to speak, you need to make sure that you register with the sign-in sheet. I will call roll. So in attendance, physically in attendance today, we have Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, and Supervisor Gephardt. Attending remotely, we have Supervisor Walsh and Supervisor Guy. We do need a motion first.
Second.
What participation is finding exceptional circumstances?
Mr. Chairman, I can barely hear you.
Okay, let's see if I'll speak up a little bit. Is that better, Bill?
Much, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a couple of changes to the order of the agenda, if you would so entertain. I would like to add a new item for discussion due to urgency, and that would be discussing our meter situation. I would suggest to move it to item four, C, D, or E. And I would like to have items four, C, and D moved up ahead of item three, E.
So items C and...
Yeah. Move the meter discussion to the end of the last action item on four. I don't care what number it is. And then take items C and D under the action items in four, and move them up ahead of three, E. I think it would be more pertinent.
Okay, so we can hit it in the manager's report?
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Any opposition to that?
No, I don't even, where is the meter discussion?
Not on there.
So what...
It's not on there.
What's this?
You may want to also, may want to be more appropriate District Council.
I'm sorry?
Put the item under District Council.
The meter?
Yes.
That might even be a better deal.
Under three, eight.
Under three, eight. I don't have a problem with that.
So Tony, you'll just...
Yes, sir.
You'll broach that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And also, we do have a packed agenda today, so we are going to try to move things along. I'm not going to cut anybody off, so to speak, but if we start going down a rabbit hole, or if it seems like that we need to table a discussion, or there's a more pertinent time for it, I will try to just govern that in the best possible, so we're not here all night. Respectfully. Let's start with public comments. Laura?
I have one agenda comment and three non-agenda. The agenda is from Rad Senior. It's regarding, well, now we moved the agenda wrong, but former agenda items three, D, three, E, and four, D.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, fellow residents. Item three, E, interim district management solution. We've clearly got two vacant positions which are very, very important to us. It's going to take a bit of time. Doug, I don't know where you're at with your search firms. I guess you're looking nationwide. I hope so, because I see Southwest Florida as being a very attractive place, even for northerners to come down to. I do think it'll take a bit of time, because the best people are probably currently employed, and they have to give due notice, et cetera. So I do support the concept of an interim district management solution. I think it makes good business practice. I've done it myself in management consulting on a pro temp basis for a few months to help stabilize the district and to make sure we don't rush into a bad decision to replace our district manager and public works manager. Those two positions alone, I'm guessing, are worth about $20,000 bucks a month with salary and benefits. So if we can get a district management firm in for a little while underneath that number, I think we're home and dry. There is the point about synergy. When you bring in a firm who's got some CDD expertise, you're getting the benefit of their experience and their qualifications and their budgetary and financial control skills. I'm not talking about accounting, which is Steven Blooms. I'm talking about controlling the money before it's spent, not accounting for it after it's spent. You get licensed people. And particularly in this case, in our district, utilities and public works expertise are badly needed right now within underground. I also want to, hopefully, if the Board supports this interim company, we can get some good ideas, new ideas in pond damp restoration. It's a top project for us, we're spending, I don't know, 10 million or something. It's huge. And I'm of the opinion that there is something other than the binary discussion we've had. You know, we're talking about Arm and Max and Harden stone surface, which is really expensive. And the other side of the coin is laterals. There are a lot of in-betweens. G O two fiber rolls, coconut matting. We do need to explore that, save some money, and hopefully, if we're getting outside firming, they'll be able to help with that. Second item I want to talk about is the proposal from Florida West Football Club. That's Florida West F C. I've read their proposal on the Board book, and I just would ask the Board, I know the two gentlemen from Pelican Reserve don't pay for the soccer, but nevertheless, you've got a vote, and I would ask you to be fiscally aware. And if you, I think this contract on the face of it makes some sense from Florida West, but I would ask you to take some care, whoever's going to do the negotiating, to make sure we get full financial disclosure from these people. And that includes the concession income that they get for cash. I would also ask you to get some guarantees from them. I know they've drawn a bar chart that they're going to pay us $80,125 in the next three years. I'd like that to be a guarantee. If you can get that from, that would be great. And put that alongside the Gateway Soccer and see which is the better for us to choose. I also would ask you to do some research and due diligence on Florida, on the Florida West as well, get some references. Those are my comments on that. And lastly, the oak chart that has been drawn up. I've looked at it today, and I honestly can't understand why it warrants creating a new Parks and Rec division. I just don't understand that. We have a dog park and we have a swimming pool, and I don't see why we need to separate out and make a Parks and Rec division and a new manager for that division when the new park proposal is clearly dead in the water. If it wasn't, that would be a different thing. I think Parks, Rec, and landscaping should belong to Public Works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's up next?
All right. Next, we have Warren Davies from Stony Brook Advisory Committee with a non-agenda item.
Good afternoon, Board. Warren Davies, Stony Brook, representing the Stony Brook Advisory Committee. Over the past couple of meetings, there's been some discussion. I know the Board members received an email saying that the advisory committee should have 11 members on it. Before you received that email, we had already, as the advisory committee, working on that aspect of it, because research had showed us that it's kind of up in the air. In 2009, when the advisory committee was first developed, they had five members on that board, on that committee. Two years later, they went to move to seven. The Board passed a motion to approve seven members on the advisory committee. Resolution 201215 was presented to the Board with seven. But because they had six people who applied for to work on that committee, the Board decided they would just go ahead and put all six on the committee, making an 11-person committee, which is really a poor way to do it and a poor number to have. Over the next two years, with the 11 people, the committee had a difficult time getting a quorum. They needed six. And reviewing the minutes, there were many meetings where the advisory committee had no report, and it was reported several different times that it was because of no quorum. The next move was in February 2014, and they brought it back under Resolution 2014-12 to change that number from 11 to nine. That was brought in on the 19th, discussed. There was discussion on seven members instead of nine. That resolution was tabled and never to be heard of again. So as we look back at these things, it was the only resolution we had that we could back up to was the 11-person committee. Somewhere after 2014 and now, and I'd say it was several years ago, there allegedly was a verbal commitment to go ahead and let the committee serve with seven people. We cannot document that either with the minutes from the Board or any other conversation, other than the Chairman of the Committee advises that that was what it was. So the committee has decided to propose a new resolution to amend the 2012 resolution. And we have worked on it, and we have included items from the 2012 to 2014, because there's some stark differences between the two. So we wanted to get all that stuff in there, plus some other things that we felt necessary. Several changes. There was a two-year term given to the members. We thought that was not a good thing, because, again, reading some of the minutes, Board members said that was a pain, because trying to remember who was going to go when. So we felt that the best thing to do in that area was just to appoint someone, let them stay as necessary, and then when they leave, then go through the process of selecting somebody else. We also limited the number of HOA board members that can serve on the advisory committee. We didn't want a full house of the Board to serve in HOA, then coming down here and serving CDD. It kind of negates some of the things that the advisory committee was going. So what we'd like to do is, we have prepared a draft resolution. I have paperwork on that and some documents on it that I would like the Board to consider moving that on to the Attorney, so he can do his legal lease work on it, and then bring it back to the Board, so we can perhaps discuss more in depth, any changes or anything that the Board would see fit. The Board has, the committee has worked very well with seven people. We've always had a quorum and stuff, so it works much better with seven than it does with 11. 11 would just be overwhelming sometimes trying to get anything done. So I'll give this paperwork to Laura, and then she can get it. There's copies of all the resolutions and our draft and a clean copy of our draft. Thank you.
Warren, I have one question. You said, made reference that you were going to limit the number of HOA board members?
Yes. Yes.
You didn't say, is it going to be one or is it going to be five?
Well, we want to make sure there's no more than a certain number, because it...
That's what I'm asking.
Have you defined the number?
Well, we're recommending the Board, the committee decided three, so there would not be a...
Not dominated by...
A dominating thing. And in research around the area, some people don't allow anybody on some of these kinds of boards. Again, it comes down to, if you have something at the HOA, this one person gets two votes here and there. They can say, okay, here, then come down here and say no. So just trying to smooth it out, so the things that are coming from the HOA are going to move through.
And how many HOAs do you have?
Just two. Well, we have the master, and then we have a bill of board, which really is not...
So there's only two HOAs in all of Stony Brook?
Yes. Yes.
Yep. And on that point, I can talk to Warren more, but there become sunshine law issues also if there's a board member, the advisory committees.
There's more than one board member.
It's applicable to sunshine.
Yep.
Does P-PAC have any term limits?
Well, unless it's a quorum.
Yes, they do. Formally, not for individual members. There's a two-year term here on the Chairman and the Vice Chair. But other than that, no.
We have people, even with the two-year term limit in the resolution, that have served 10 years and never been renewed, because it just never come up. One of those things that just, it's there, but it doesn't come up. So we have...
So you've got, let's just say, for sake of argument, you've got seven committee members.
Right.
You have interest in other individuals that would like to serve. If there's not a vacancy, there's no open.
There's no hope. Right, right. And the one thing we put in also, and one of the problems they had when they had the 11, was people not showing up, is we put in there that if they do not show up for three meetings in a row, they may be removed from the committee.
P-PAC has echo.
Okay. Yeah, that's worked on.
We've never had exercises, but we had.
Yeah, well, yeah, but it's there.
Thanks, Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next one is a non-resident, Julian Cruz. He made a request, I believe Georgia printed it out for you. He would like to use Field Five on Sundays for 10 weeks for an 18 and over male soccer league, and they're non-Gateway residents. It's being brought in front of the Board, because there's some concerns, overuse and damage on Field Five. That's the only day that those fields aren't used is Sunday. Julian?
I'm sorry, I didn't begin English.
He understands it. I'm just going to try to interpret.
He just wants to know if you guys will rent him the field, and it's just for fun.
So this is just, are they pickup games, or is this a structured league?
It's just pickup games, just for fun. They want to play soccer out here on the field.
Okay. Any questions? We won't address this until later on.
What, the amount that is estimated here, is that in line with what our current rate?
That's billed at the same rates that anybody who would be under contract would get charged to use the fields, including the non-resident fee per person.
Yeah, that's my question. Is this equate, this equates to the non-resident fee for the same amount of usage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's...
I still have one question. So are they requesting on the only day that the soccer field is not open?
It's just Sunday, Sunday afternoon.
It's just Sundays, you're looking for eight hours from nine to five on Sundays, and only one field. So eight hours every day on Field Five.
The term? The term?
10 weeks. And they'd like to start this weekend if possible.
Okay. They want to start.
So they'd be done by the end of September, or December?
Is it, is there an entity involved? Is it an individual corporation, LLC, sole proprietorship?
I mean, there'd have to be insurance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we already told them that we'd need a certificate of insurance with us listed as additional insured. It's Cruz, he has a Sunbiz organization called Cruz Soccer League, Inc.
Sorry, you're not charging the players?
No, no, no. That's where he's confused, because they're charging him $30 a person. And she, he never charges league people. He told his, the guys pay, and they don't want to. So that's why he came today to X.
Yeah, I mean, you have to rent fields.
He said he don't mind renting the fields from you guys, the bathrooms, everything, just $30 a person.
I'm not sure, I...
That's the additional, the non-resident fee per person. That's what he's questioning.
Do we charge non-residents $30?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, for league use. It's annual.
Yeah, it's just the one, there's one $30 charge for each person, each of the 66 people.
Yeah, that's standard, what we do for all of our, all of our usage, all of our leagues.
That would be, whether it's 10 weeks or 30 weeks.
It's only one-time fee?
It's a one-time $30 per person charge.
Per year.
Una vez, y puedes ver a los diez semanas, nomás los diez semanas que tú pediste, pero nomás te van a cobrar esos 30 dólares por persona. Una vez, nada más.
And that's in addition to the lease agreement amount?
I'm having a hard time hearing her.
A minute.
Flavi, can you hear me, or are you talking about the speaker?
I can hear you good, I just couldn't hear the speaker.
I muted, people have called in.
Um, any... All right, so this is further down in the agenda. Is that correct?
No, this is a walk-on.
Oh, this is a walk-on. Okay, we'll have to add it to, I mean, we'll have to add it to four D, I mean, four F.
But is it clear in your mind now what the cost would be if it's approved?
To say that he wants to rent the fields again for another whole year? He has to pay another $30 a person?
No, not as long as it's within the annual year.
So he can still rent without no problem?
Unless there's more than 66 people.
This is for a 10-week period. I guess the question is, the next year, if he wants another 10-week period?
Yeah, I mean, it's annual, so he'd pay it for this year, and let's say if he rent again in January, February, it would start all over again. So you're at the, it's for the physical year. So if you come in now...
Calendar year.
Calendar year.
So the calendar year.
So starting 2022 is a whole new year. He'll pay another $30 a person.
That's correct.
So terminando este año, 2021 se termina. Si comienzas cono en marzo, tienes que pagar otra vez los 30 por persona. Nomás esta vez por todo el año. Tú no estás pagando desde ahorita hasta diciembre. Okay, you want to say that? No?
Mr. Tinkle, can you speak into your microphone, please?
Okay, so he just says, he's not going to do it, because they don't want to pay them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, and our last person who's requested to speak today is Matt Chitwood regarding the Gateway Oaks.
Good afternoon, Board. I will keep this short. I tried to wait till after budget, so you guys wouldn't be busy, or as busy, but looks like you're... Over the last two months, we have collected signatures for a petition to present to you as the Board in reference to the Oaks. So I'm going to go ahead and read it. It's not that long. "We, the undersigned residents of the Gateway neighborhoods within the Gateway Community Development District, Gateway C D, are very concerned with the increased removal of oak trees and continued discussion from CDD supervisors and staff about oak tree removal throughout the district. Under Land Development Chapter 10, Article 3, and Chapter 14, Article 5, Lee County has placed special protections on oak trees and other indigenous trees to prevent excessive pruning and removal. These protections have been enacted to preserve the positive environmental impact of mature trees throughout the county. Based on our concerns, we are requesting the following actions be implemented within 45 days of the receipt of this petition by the Gateway C D Board to prevent further loss of oak trees that make Gateway a signature area of Lee County. Number one, because of the reckless and careless removal of oak trees in the recent past, we request that all oak tree removals in the C D be placed as an agenda item at the regular C D meetings to be approved by vote by the Board of Supervisors. If an oak tree in the C D, number two, if the oak tree in the C D is lost or removed for any reason, it will be replaced with another oak tree as soon as possible. Number three, the C D staff will, within 45 days, begin to restore and replant oak trees along Gateway Boulevard and other roadways in the C D that have been lost over time or removed. The goal of this replacing, replanting should be to preserve and improve the oak canopy throughout the district. Number four, the C D will establish a landscape advisory committee made up of Gateway C D residents who will review landscape plans presented by the staff and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors about landscape projects and changes. At the time I printed this out, that's the end, at the time I printed this out, we had over 400 signatures from Gateway residents, mostly, about 99.9%, mostly Gate residents. And I will give this to Laura for you guys to take a look at for the signatures, has the residents their names and their neighborhoods that they're from. And that is it. I did not see the Arborist report on the agenda, so I won't address any of that today. Let you guys get to your other business.
It's in the workshop.
Yeah, it's in the workshop.
Oh, it is in the workshop, yeah, okay. So it's kind of switching it up. We're doing workshops at the end, so we can get through business. But we have it scheduled for 12:15.
I'll just do, make a quick comment, because I have another meeting at 5:00. This will be quick. I've read through this several times. I know you're not going to, I'm hoping you're not going to make any decisions on it specifically today from what you've talked about in the past.
Just a workshop.
Yeah, I see, the big thing that jumps out at Mount Me is money, money on this, and somebody wanted, a vendor wanted to get paid. And looking at trees in an individual fashion is what I, when I, when I read this. When I listened to the water discussion at the last meeting, some Ed specifically, and some of you guys are really, you know, the water and the waterways within this community really well. Mr. Gephardt made a comment about he's not an expert in tree or in water, but he's done a lot of research, and he, you know, kind of knows common sense. And the, this Arborist report was, seemed to be lacking to me, just based on my six months of reading and understanding and learning about the urban forest that we have throughout the district. It's not about individual trees. Every, we all understand, or not most of us understand, that certain trees will be a problem at certain times. But overall, we have a urban forest here. The University of Florida has extension offices in every county in the state of Florida. And our Lee County Extension Office has switched from a farming agricultural type office to more a environmental office based on the preservation of existing environmental forests, basically. I mean, they've got a big push for keeping urban forests intact. So again, when I looked at this report, I saw a lot of things about, well, this specific tree here, and this tree here, or this tree here by the roundabout. It looks like it wasn't planted right, because now it looks, well, it's, if you've been here for more than six months, you'd know that a year ago, there was another tree right next to that, and that's why it looks funky now. So I saw a lot of discrepancies in that report when it came to those things. So, and again, money, money, money is what I saw mainly in this report. Pay me, so every 10 years I can come in, take an old tree out and put a new one in. I kept reading that over and over again for the report. So sorry I had to add that extra, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
Okay, District Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Tinkle mentioned one topic. I'll take that up first. It's with regards to Four Line Center and the meter replacement contract. I recall we engaged the services, using my law firm, the Toronto County Attorney, which is an expert, to analyze the system, had the report. We had planned on with manager getting together with the Board at a Board meeting to discuss it. A lot of intervening... Stormwater system in Pelican Reserve, when in 2011 it was discovered that there was major issues. And that's when the district went after RWA, the engineering firm that certified its being compliant, and also Johnson Engineering at the time. And in this instance, because what we suggest is, there's no pending litigation, so we cannot have a closed-door session. That's, the Florida section is very clear, is when we can have a closed-door session. But we would like to have the Board's authorization to send out a demand letter, similar to what went out to Lennar, send it out to Four Line, outlining various latent defects. There was a number that popped up, I think, late December, excuse me, late December 2017. outlining various latent defects. Uh, there was a number that popped up, I think late December, excuse me, late December two thousand seventeen, arguably as MIUs, and two thousand nineteen as the ETR components of the meters. Uh, so we're within a window of an opportunity for the month to ultimately litigate that issue, to, to do that. There's statute establishes a process where you make a demand first with the contractor, instructor, engineer, professional, to remediate and take care of the defects and the listed defects, but it doesn't preclude a lawsuit being filed before that goes out. It just says you can't proceed on the lawsuit until that demand letter goes out. So what I'm asking for today is the authorization to do two things. One is to prepare and submit and send to Four Line, I'll call it the demand letter to cure a number of issues with regards to the meter issue, meter replacement. And then at the next board meeting, or it might be, hopefully the next board may come back with a budget and a requested authorization to take certain actions depending upon the response we get from Four Line. The, uh, there's a statute of repos, it's called, the ten-year statute of repos, ten years from the date of completion, you can litigate construction defects, but there's a statute limitation that said, however, it's four years from the date the newer should have known that there were defects, the latent defects. And, uh, we're taking the position that they're more latent defects not noticeable, because in September two thousand seventeen, we believe, is when the substantial completion took place, when the contractor said, after this one audit, it had been informed, we have substantial completion. Uh, but then after that point in time, uh, you know, late two thousand seventeen or early two thousand eighteen, the MIU issue popped up to be more problematic. In two thousand nineteen, talking to Leslie, very good conversation yesterday, two thousand nineteen, ETR. So what we'd just like today is authorization to send that, uh, uh, demand letter, uh, under five fifty-eight, and work with Mr. Tinko, he's been involved in it, and then bring back to the board, like I said, a budget and a recommended course of action at the next board meeting, including possible litigation, to preserve the district's rights. After litigation is filed, it doesn't have to be served for a hundred and twenty days, but after litigation is filed, then we can have a closed-door session.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that would probably be our recommendation.
Any, uh, any discussion? No.
Yeah. A couple of things I've.
And, and from the standpoint of the report they have, once you have. So just not read from that report.
Not going into that.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know what you had in front of you yet. I'm sorry.
No, uh, what report? Okay. Got that, got that squared away. Uh, I've read the five fifty-eight. The only thing I want to make sure is a couple of things, Tony. When, are you going to deliver this, the five fifty-eight, before our next meeting?
Yes, that's the green plan.
Okay, well, then I would want to be able to, be able to review that, because there are a couple of things, and it's, uh, I hate doing all this stuff in the, in the public, but that's what you gotta do. Uh, there is a potential, there is a potential here for a conflict of interest. There is a potential. Alls I want to make sure is that your firm knows that if that potential exists, that you might have to drop out.
Okay, I'm not sure what that conflict of interest is, if you want.
The, you're opining on the deal that there was no conflict of interest with the contractor on subcontracting with Severn Trent? That will come up in this issue. It will come up, believe me. It will come up.
Well, I don't know.
As long as that's not an issue with you guys.
In my opinion, I don't believe, we'll look at it more, but I don't feel that's a basis for disqualification.
I'm just saying, if, if it comes up and there gets to be one, uh, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we look at an outside construction law firm if that has, if that happens. Right now, I totally agree with what Tony's doing. Uh, I think five fifty-eight is the answer of what we need to do. Uh, it gives them forty-five days to respond.
Uh, but it doesn't preclude filing a lawsuit during that period?
Correct, correct, correct. I, I think, I think his, uh, well, is that appropriate? I, I think what he's proposing to do, the only thing that scared me on all this, the only reason I called and asked for this to be put on the agenda, is I started reading this stuff, and this timeline's got me scared to death.
I've been there. I understand.
Yeah. Uh, well, I, I don't know, I understand you understand, because you know, I've talked with, I don't know that the rest of them understand. The issue is, I totally agree, we need to take and file the five fifty-eight. The only thing I would like to have, uh, an opinion from Tony on is, is that, do we file the five fifty-eight, and is the five fifty-eight limited to privy? If it's limited to privy, then we go to Four Line. If it's not limited to privy, we file suit of own against both, uh, Four Line, Severn Trent, and the Zener all at the same time.
We will research that as part of, what letter we should go out.
Yeah. Do, do we have a motion to proceed?
I like that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Flavi and Bill?
Yes.
Yes, Flavi? Yes.
And also as part of that, it's me to work with Mr. Tinko on that.
I'm sorry.
And I really want to thank Tony for, in, in a real short notice, um, issue at, uh, uh, Pollock Reserve. Uh, I see where we're coming on this. Uh, I guess we'll just leave it in their hands, the ball's in their park after we do our thing. Yeah, but something's gotta be done.
Alright, um, do you have anything else?
Yeah, real quick, nice segue. Y'all have a copy of, of the letter to Russell Smith, WCI?
Yep.
I have had no response back. Uh, you know, also I sent it to Charles Mann, represented by counsel, uh, and so we'll just see how far that goes with regards to, on the.
So, so this letter is on the street then? This is not a draft? This is on the street?
Well, this is public record.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's out there. It, it was, it's certified mail received, I think, October fifth, on Monday, the fourth.
Tony, please speak into your microphone.
Uh, this letter is, it's a public record, it's out there, uh, and it was, we signed for by someone at WCI, and it was also hand-delivered. We have a hand-deliver receipt acknowledged also to send it.
One, one, one question on this, boy, this is embarrassing, because I might be stepping in my own, you know what? Did we have an authorization to authorize you to submit the five fifty-eight on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, if you recall.
Maybe I got lost in the, in the language.
We had that conversation of, I think, the board meeting in September, where I had in front of me, the record drawings showed a.
Oh, I got all that. I just didn't remember the term five fifty-eight.
It showed, it showed a two thousand ten record drawing, and then we realized and discovered that, in fact, the transaction was November two thousand seventeen, and it wasn't discovered until two thousand twenty, as far as.
And then you got the four-year deal.
Oh, so we won't. We're with a year, half.
That's my question, okay.
So I think.
So right, right now.
I may have not used the five fifty-eight term.
But that was what had me confused, because I didn't recognize.
But the demand to Lennar to, to take care of.
The, the, so, so they're on the clock, so they have till November fifteenth to, uh, at the last date to get back to us.
Uh, with Lee Health, I'm still looking at, there's more questions I need to have to, uh, Mr. Evolini. Uh, and I'll put together a package, including all the documents he provided with regards to the building they bought, the old, uh, Sony building. I guess they want to spend almost five million dollars to, uh, renovate that for their training and education center, but there's also some language in there that talks about uh, commercial space, retail space. I just need to clarify that with Mr. Evolini. That's the request to have that property exempt from the district's special assessments.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Stephen, are you on from Touch Tech?
Uh, I just have one question for Tony. Sorry, sorry, Doug. Tony, any updates on the FPL?
I'm sorry?
Any updates for me on the FPL and the maintenance and?
Well, my eyes are going crazy from reading a bunch of utility easements that are just meets and bounds with no sketches and otherwise. But I will have that, I will have a written report the next board.
Thank you.
Anything else for Tony? Okay.
And by the way, just as an aside, too, one of the easements says, uh, I, I, I would be that we may have to take the property upon being tendered, the conveyance, so I'll, I'll share that with the board also, you know, that FPL easement.
Alright. Uh, Touch Tech.
I'm hoping I didn't inadvertently mute someone from Touch Tech. There were a few people that called in that I had to mute.
Um, Stephen, if you're on, if you wouldn't mind maybe putting in the chat if you are.
Well, I'm on, so Stephen should be on too. I don't know if he's unmuted, but, uh, we had a couple of items on here. Uh, task authorizations. I think Steve was gonna give an update on a couple of projects, so if he's able to, to join, he can chime in after that, but we have. Uh, actually, one's. There you are. I, you want to go ahead and give an update on the project status, Stephen?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I just want to give an update on, uh, the last lake of Phase Two Year One Lake Bank Restoration Project. Um, we're scheduled to start that one pretty soon, uh, since the rains have started to slow down. We're hoping by the end of this month or early in November, if, uh, we keep getting less and less rain, we'll be able to start Lake Ninety-three, uh, which is in Timber Ridge.
What is the likelihood of that? Because we're probably about as high as we've been. Do you think we're?
No, we're way, we're way back down. We are, we are within fractions of an inch of being back to control elevation. It's dropped at least six inches.
Same here, buddy.
Yeah, okay. So go ahead.
Yeah, so the contractor is taking a look at it, and he, he feels pretty, this is Met Tower, um, they feel confident that, you know, barring a tropical storm, um, we should be, uh, clear to go in, in early November or later this month, so. Um, aside from that, we've got a, a few task authorizations on here. Uh, the first task authorization we have today is for the next round of Lake, Lake Bank Restoration. This is Phase Two Year Two. This is for the eight remaining lakes that were approved in the facilities plan in early two thousand nineteen, I think, back in February of twenty nineteen. Uh, the lakes were finalized early this year, the design, and it was submitted to SRF for their approval, and they approved it for funding, uh, this past August. So this task authorization includes getting an LDO permit for the lakes, bidding, construction management, and inspection services. Uh, this task authorization is for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Stephen, can you give us a, a, a listing of those ponds?
Uh, yes, sir. It's, uh, let me pull this up so I can give you a roundabout location, too. It is Lake Fifty-Eight and Sixty-Two, which are in Stony Brook, One Thirty and One Twenty-Seven, which are in Hidden Links, One Seventeen in Gateway Greens, Lakes Eighty-Five and Eighty-Eight, which are in Silver Lakes, and Lake Seventy-Nine, which is in, it's kind of like in between like the commerce area, or the commercial area, and Daniel's Preserve on the southeast side of their boundary.
What is, what is Thirty and Twenty-Seven?
One Thirty and One Twenty-Seven over Hidden Links.
One Thirty and One Twenty-Seven are in Hidden Links between, I guess that's like northern Gateway Greens, is that Mahogany Run maybe up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where One Twenty-Seven is, so.
Stephen, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and is it Lake Eighty-Eight and Eighty-Five is Silver Lakes, the ones that have their silence deals? For the laterals?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The Lake Eighty-Five and Lake Eighty-Eight, um, those are the two lakes that have silence deals on the laterals. So when we're filing to the amendment for the LDO, is it, are you planning to amend anything in regards to the lateral to match anything else, or you're gonna leave it as it?
Our plan is just to go off of the original lateral plan in the original LDO, so we're, we're planning to match that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think.
Can we comment on that?
Yeah, I think what Flavi is, is getting to is if.
If, if amendment to an LDO, you're just gonna take those lakes and throw them into oblivion. Uh, I'm totally opposed to that.
Why do you say that?
The development order says there's no, uh, lateral requirements in those ponds, so why would we go? It's silent, it's silent.
So that, I thought that was.
There's not a requirement. The only thing that we would do is we'd have to go back and change the LDO. I, I don't know why we would get into that, and that, I mean, it's just. We need to get those ponds taken care of.
We're sending a hell of a lot of pond, and we're not putting any protection to prevent the root.
Bob, it won't work. Bob, it won't.
So, I mean, I don't know if you need to amend the LDO to go plant laterals. I mean, is the county really gonna be mad at you if you go plant a bunch of laterals in there?
Well, that's, that's the question. The county won't, but I can tell you that the residents will be opposed to it because they want us to file the D O. So I guess what I'm really trying to do is, if, if we're going to, at any point, have laterals at the, at that pond, this is the time to amend it. If not, then they're gonna continue to be silenced, but if we have an opportunity now, and, and if we see there's a need for it, for whatever reason, now is the time to do it, because we are amending, you know, we are creating an L, LDO for that pond, so.
Yeah, I mean.
It's really up to, to, does it need it? You know, do you, I mean, you, you're in, you guys are engineers, so if you feel like there's a need, and if it's gonna help, then I don't see why wouldn't we do it.
Stephen, at this point in time, aren't you just simply, the request for consideration here is to prepare, uh, uh, design documents for bidding?
For bidding for the LDO permitting, and, uh, yeah, through construction.
So, so what we're doing is preparing the design documents, it's gonna come back before us, before we authorize any submission or anything like that anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
So what you're saying is, there's an opportunity, that if there are any changes, there is another opportunity for us to.
Let me caveat that. So we, we sent design plans to SRF, and those have been approved as they are. Um, we can make changes to that, and we have done that in the past, and we have gotten change orders successfully from SRF, so I don't see that being an issue.
Okay, already got planned. I, I want to make sure that that was clear. If we've got plans done, have we had the opportunity to approve those, or they go into, for any other further work, whether it be bidding or permitting or whatever?
You'll have that opportunity, yeah. I mean, I can send you the plans now. Um, I know, you know, the staff has them, um, or Kirst did at least anyways, but, uh, we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to look at those.
I, I think you're probably better to have an agenda item as opposed to serve it individually, if that's where the board's heading for review.
I was, I was saying, I, what I'd like to do is see what they are, and I think Bob would like to do the same thing, is just look at these to see what the extent of the work is. If this is an Armamax project, which I cannot believe that it's an Armamax project, we're beyond that. We're down to ponds that don't have that original, uh, sophisticated need to, to be fixed with that type of a fix. Uh, I think what we need to do is to look and see what we've got. I don't know Bob, Bob wasn't available, but just want to refresh everybody's memory on this whole issue of laterals, and these ideas of bringing in, uh, these other outside ideas, while they are grand, and I'm totally with them. We tried this, guys, remember, we did an experimental project on one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight, five years ago, almost six years ago, and it was a disaster. We went in on ponds one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, three sides were on residential. We went the standard way, the fourth side was the golf course side. We didn't do it, we put in the laterals, and they failed. It doesn't look fail. We had to back in, put in the, uh, 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 material and put in the stone. I don't know how many more times we need to go to the whipping post.
What was failed? What, they died?
They washed into the water with the rain. They didn't grab a hold and take root quick enough to avoid the impacts of rain. It, it just doesn't work. These soils around here, and people don't understand this, we have about the crappiest soil you can get on these pond banks. We tried, if you remember, on Pond One Oh Four, which is on right next to Hampton Green and the golf course. We brought the stuff out of the bottom of the lake, trying to save money, put it up on the lake bank. We pounded the living daylights out of it, trying to compact it. It was like, uh, taking grits, uh, wet grits. It didn't compact, it just oozes right back down into the lake. We're wasting our time on this unless and until somebody can find a pond that has a material that's not like the typical Gateway pond, it's got this, uh, what I would call it, uh, uh, mucky, uh, silty material that just retains water like crazy, and you can't compact it, and the minute you try to take and put something in it, which we did on one oh six, one oh seven, and eight, they failed. So then we spent, we knew it, we knew it. We went into it, understanding that. We said, let's try it and see if it works. It failed. I don't know why we'd want to try it again.
So Stephen, I think what we'd like to do is, uh, if you could send the plans out.
Send the plans, yeah.
And then we would like the opportunity, uh, to approve, uh, the design, um, at, at some point, because I think we do have to make some fundamental decisions on, are we willing to invest in, in ponds that, you know, without certain, uh, safeguards for, you know, long-term, uh, continued erosion or some of, and I'm not saying, you know, whether we do or don't make any adjustments, but I think we, we at least need to have conversations.
Well, I wasn't involved in one oh six, one oh seven, or one oh eight, when that was done, I, so I can't speak to that, but I can tell you, we've installed laterals in fifty-eight ponds in Pelican, haven't had failure yet. Now, we've had a replant on, we've had some die, but overall, and I don't think the, the soil is that substantially different. And, uh, so I. And, uh, so I, failure is not an option. The, the, the pond banks will hold materials, maybe a question of how you put them in and, you know, what kind of a base you put in, but they will, they will take hold and they will solve the problem. So, you know, to me, the issue is to go back over, even go all the way back to the, the pond standards. And this board needs to sooner or later vote on whether we're gonna go beyond the minimums of the minimum of D O and say, in great, greater Gateway and Pelican, we are going to have laterals because of all the benefits. We've gotten studies that tell us, we've got all the academia that everybody says they like it except for some residents that don't like it. But it's still a good value for our product and our product is our ponds.
Well, I, I, I totally agree that let's, let's see the plans. My only problem is we, we run into an issue here, uh, that there is a certification and there's a professional license involved. They're just like going to the doctor and you're telling him you want two of those pills instead of one. He may agree with you, may not, and he, his license and his insurance ain't gonna help him when he listens to you and he's proven to be wrong. Same way with the engineers. The engineer is saying and telling us that this is the way that we go. I'm gonna err on the side of the engineer, not on the side of the layman that thinks they know what is right. Because we tried it on one oh six, one oh seven, and eight, and it failed miserably. And our staff.
You know, Ed, let me just, sorry. I, I just wanna add this. The school, Gateway High School was just built. You know, I, I know this failed five years ago. For whatever reason, I wasn't involved as much, so I can't tell you why, and I won't speculate why. But I'll tell you this, the Gateway High School was just built last year. We got three ponds there. They all were planted with laterals. They all stay, they all survive. Uh, I did visit it before I left on my trip. I did go to Timber Creek, and they have plenty of ponds, and they're there, they survive. It's the same soil. So maybe it was how they were done, I don't know, but there is an opportunity for them to be, you know, planted maybe just differently. I, I don't know how many other ways you can plant the laterals, but the Gateway High School is, is a great example how they were planted, they survive, and they're thriving, you know, so.
Opportunities, Flavi, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. The opportunity exists when you do it at the beginning. You don't have all the runoff of all the roofs and all the roads and everything else. The laterals and the banks have a chance to stabilize. That's not what we got. We got constant water going out there right now. We're trying to fix it after the fact. That's the difference.
Well, let's not, let's not.
But let's see the plans. I agree.
So, um, can I get, uh, can I get a motion to approve task authorization, uh, twenty twenty-two oh one, Lake construction phase two?
Don't move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so, um, the next task authorization we have is for hydraulic modeling of the irrigation system. Uh, Kenny and staff have been trying to develop a method to restrict illegal use of irrigation water outside of, uh, prescribed days and times. Uh, this project will update the irrigation model. Um, we're going to calibrate the model with data provided by Kenny, and we're going to include any additional improvements that have happened since two thousand eighteen was the last time we updated this. Um, then we will use the model to locate the best position for a control valve to, uh, split the irrigation system, essentially, uh, shutting parts of the system down to stop, uh, illegal use of irrigation water. Um, this T A is for fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Any, any additional questions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
All right, the last item on the, uh, agenda is, uh, change order task authorization for, uh, flowway weir control adjustments. Uh, back in the last August meeting, I believe, we were directed by the board to prepare change order to include an adjustable weir on control structure for Lake thirty-eight, which is in the south end of Pelican Preserve, uh, I believe the Viadonna area. So this change order will allow us to design, permit, bid, and provide construction manag- management services for the project uh, alongside the, uh, existing design for the, the adjustable flowway weirs. Um, this change order is for fifty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll go motion.
Yeah, I'll.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my understanding is that we can't make any changes to these, uh, weirs unless we have approval from South Florida Water Management. Confirm, confirm that if so.
We've, uh, talked to the, the district several times and they've signaled that we will be able to permit, they'll permit changes to the structures. Uh, the caveat to that is we will not be able to operate them on our whim. Uh, essentially, we have to seek like guidance from them or approval to, uh, release water. Um, Pam, I think her name's Pam, is that right, Danny?
No.
District she.
Melissa, Melissa Roberts. Yeah, in this particular case, though, Bill, the discussion we had with Melissa was because what, what Stephen's talking about is the flowway weirs. In this particular case, uh, what the Water Management District has opined is that this is, uh, this is a control structure out of an interior lake into the interior system, and they're not gonna get, uh, involved in, uh, telling us we cannot move water internally. So, uh, we will have to permit this, but this one will not require the same, um, the same interaction with the Water Management District upstream of a storm event like the weirs in the flowway. So with this one, we will have the ability in advance of a storm event, we know it's coming. We don't have to get with the Water Management District, uh, we can go ahead and, and lower that level because it's staying internal to the system.
So if we see water coming in from the south, which was, uh, preliminarily set at forty CFS, and we have, uh, issues or concerns, that, that, that weir could be one that would, uh, Bob, uh, or his people would be able to lower and, uh, provide more storage.
Right.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna solve all problems, but it, for those particular residents, it does help quite a bit. And, and for those that aren't familiar with it, this one's just a very weird situation. It's, it's really, in our opinion, part of the same system as the adjacent lakes, but its control elevation is set a foot higher, one or two foot higher than the lakes immediately adjacent to it. So it really makes no sense, and the Water Management District understands that. Um, so that's part why they're, you know, allowing this and recognizing that it stays internal to the system.
Danny, what's the range on that weir? How many feet, how many feet or how many inches can we go below where it was originally set at?
Well, we've got, we've got modeling in here, um, so we'll, you know, we'll know met more, we'll know better with that. In my opinion, at least a foot, because, you know, the adjacent lakes are a foot lower anyhow, and that it all goes into the same flowway that is controlled by the same ultimate weir.
Yeah, twelve, twelve to eighteen inches, eighteen inches preferably would be a lot better.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we'll be cutting into the, uh, the control structure anyway, so.
Yeah, you're gonna cut that.
Just make it a little bit further.
Yep, agreed.
Um, you have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Second, motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. All right, so, um, the last item that we have today, um, Danny Nelson and Fred Meddler are on the phone to give an update on that force main relocation project. So I note over.
Yeah, and I, and I actually volunteered since I haven't got to talk to the board in a while, so, um, uh, but Fred's on if you have any questions. So I just wanna give you an update. This is, if you've seen the equipment out there, uh, around the Griffin Drive, this is north of the Griffin Drive. This is the force main project where we're getting that force main out of the way of the intersection so that work on the roundabout when it starts, it won't be any, any impact. It'll be done, out of the way, good to go. So Quality Enterprise is out there currently working. We hit a snag, uh, last, last week. The, uh, original location we had for the portion, for a portion of it along, uh, Griffin, um, is a conflict with the stormwater pipe. So stormwater pipe, we had, uh, the information that we had from our, from the data survey came from the county. It's in a little bit different location and it's a pretty, it's a big pipe. It's a seventy-two inch pipe. So, um, we've got to move it. While we were in design, uh, we had been in discussion with, uh, Palo, uh, K, our K O, K O Palon, uh, to obtain an easement that would allow us to, uh, actually put the force main there if needed be. We actually designed it not to have to go in there. Got the easement recorded, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, and we were overlaying that in our AutoCAD system, and lo and behold, the easement is right on top of the existing easement we have, so it's really not helpful. So Laura's been working very diligently to, um, to get the easement recorded in the right location and it'll allow us to move that force main out. Uh, currently, it's not a, uh, item that's affecting their schedule, but it, it soon will be. They're currently working, um, on other areas, so just, that's just kind of a quick update. If you see them out there and, and then you wonder why they're, they're not working, uh, hopefully we'll be able to get the easement recorded quickly and, and move forward.
Danny, are we gonna have to take some action to de-record that original easement?
You read our mind.
Having it in hand.
A couple days ago, we had a conference call of, I think, two days ago or yesterday, it's been that kind of week.
I think it was yesterday, but I, yeah.
Yesterday, yep, yesterday.
Discussion was that, and I've prepared and drafted, so this is an action item. We can ask any members of the audience if they wanted to comment. Would you vacate the utilities and that was recorded back in, uh, late September of this year?
The overlay?
Yes, and then record a new utilities with the exact same language. Uh, there's two conditions, that one, need a sketch and legal. I have a sketch, but not legal, uh, meets and bounds of that proposed easement. And secondly, uh, an affidavit of title, uh, from the property owner that there are no mortgages on the property, or an opinion of title that there are no mortgages, because if there's a mortgage, we need to get the consent of the mortgage holder. Otherwise, if the project goes by the, with a mortgage, we don't have a mortgage consent, the mortgage holder forecloses, our easement gets wiped out.
So, so where are we at on that?
Uh, the request would be for the board to authorize the chair to sign and execute the vacation of the easement that was, uh, recorded back, uh, back in September, and authorize the, upon, upon obtaining the necessary documents for engineers, council, manager are comfortable with, and to, uh, then obtain a new easement and accept a new easement for the utilities and for the force main.
I'll, I'll make a motion for discussion to approve that, but I've got a question.
Second, all second, second.
What, the question is, is can we proceed with haste such that we don't have any holdup of the construction?
The documents are all prepared. It's just a matter, and I think everybody's comfortable with the sketch, Danny, is that correct, of to the, the new utility easement?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a matter of getting the meets and bounds.
K, K, K O's, uh, confirmation that there's no issue.
Well, two things. Once, the, the meet, the meets and bounds to match the sketch, and also confirmation, acceptable form, that there are no mortgage holders or encumbrances on the property. The documents are here, the vacation of easement, utility easement, uh, so it's ready to be signed. Rick's been very helpful working out a two-foot by landscape.
Yeah, Rick and I have been talking quite a bit.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Danny, Steven, anything else from you guys?
Now, I, I do wanna say, for whatever reason, this issue becomes a holdup, um, you know, there, there may be a workaround to move the force main closer to Griffin. We just prefer not to, to go that route, um, as it would create some, some challenges. So just let the board know, but, um, but that's all I, that's all I had, and.
What, you're, you're, you're basically saying as an option or an alternative, go to the south. I looked at that with Kenny and Felix, there, I, that, there's no way.
Uh, yeah, we, yeah, we, we agree, we agree. This is the way, this is the way to go, and Laura's been working very, very hard, so, um, we appreciate that, Laura.
And, and Laura, just so I'm clear, this is actually C three? That, on the agenda?
Um, no, this.
This is, actually was not on the agenda.
All right, this is a walk-on.
Yeah.
This, this came up after.
So the fourth main relocation project update from Felix, is that something separate?
Um, that will not be given, that this is the up, the update on the construction progress is that item, the easement is a walk-on.
It could be fall, but it could.
It does fall under that, yeah, but we didn't have, we didn't know about the easement at the time the H O A was put on. No, that, that's already been taken care of. That update's been given. Yep.
Um, so thanks, Tetrick, appreciate it.
Oh, one question before they go for done, but it's not an agenda item. Uh, is there any update on how WCI Lanar is doing with the west side of Tree Line? As I see, they've got their piping in Kirby. I haven't seen any work on the multimodal path up to Wind Dixie. Hello?
He's muted. Steven, you're muted.
Yeah, I hope Steven can answer that one because I don't have a clue. Steven?
I didn't mute him, he muted himself.
Okay.
Good anticipation.
I'll try now.
Hey, there you got me. Hello?
Yes, we got you. Did you hear the question?
No, I was gonna give an update. So we've been going out there weekly to monitor. I think you're talking about, uh, C five project, is that right, Bob?
Right.
Yeah, so they're, they've been making progress. I'm not entirely sure about the multimodal path that you brought up, but, um, if you have something specific, I can make sure we take a look at it.
Because they're, they're installing or in the process of installing a wall or barrier or whatever between the community and Tree Line, and it's really squeezing pretty tight against the road if they're gonna put it in the multimodal. That's why, that's what prompted the question.
Okay.
I have a chicane.
Okay, cause it's not just a sidewalk. I mean, it's, it's a pretty wide pass.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, is, does Leslie have an update? I'm just kinda moving around a little bit, cause I know we've got a couple things we could put under yours.
Um, she does. Leslie, did you wanna do your update now?
Go ahead. I'm going out of sequence a little bit.
He's, he's just moving everything on. He's making my first meeting really hard.
Uh, Leslie Riktorvik, Chile billing manager. On my update, uh, Lee County's back billing was processed in this, in the September billing, so it was captured in the prior fiscal year. Um, expense, so that has been corrected going forward and we can verify the reading on the meter, so it looks like that was taken care of. Um, the calibration reports tinkled requested is taking place. They'll give us that report next month, and they will continue to do their annual calibration every.
Got adequate annual.
Um.
With most people it is.
Uh, the proposed rate study that is on action item, I have started to put out preliminary info. I've posted on Facebook, sent out to some H O As, and I'm working on a flyer to be included with the bill. Customer service wise, Santa Lu's accounts have officially been transferred to Lanar. They put in a request for connection fees for four of the nine, I believe, properties. So that was included in their connection fees and. Yes. So, um, those accounts have been transferred over and complete. Um, the following pages were just annual fiscal year reports on utility billing. I run a meter, uh, a listing every year fiscal year end, so that's just an update on where we're at year to date on meters that's up on the field. Uh, the following page is just related to customer service. I usually put that in there once a year as well. Um, not sure if anyone has any particular questions regarding the data on here.
No, I appreciate the detail, though.
And on the bottom of that page, second page, I did list out those accounts for Santa Lu's and two accounts that we have leaned. Other than that, our A R balance, thanks to Vicky, is less than four hundred dollars.
That's my thoughts.
Um.
Great job.
We do try very hard to keep up on top of those.
No, that's, that's exceptional.
Um, other than that, I'm not sure if there's anything else anyone wants to review on the report.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so we'll move into assistant district manager updates.
All right, um, the budget for fiscal twenty-two is loaded into our system. Uh, to procure fire, and we started issuing P O's last week, right on the first of the, of the month. Um, we're working with Infomark, uh, to get fiscal twenty-one closed out. Obviously, it takes a while because the invoices need to come in. I did post the business manager job on the seventeenth. We've done two interviews so far and we have another one tomorrow.
How, how do you feel what you've seen so far? Is it somewhat directionally in line with?
Um, it's kinda all over the board. There's, uh, I would say about half of the applicant, applicants are kinda in the ballpark for what we're looking for. I think there was seventeen people.
kind of in the ballpark for what we're looking for. I think there was 17 people. I reached out to seven, only three got back to me and those are the ones that we're interviewing. So. The district manager hiring update, I received one resume from FASD. I did drop it in that shared folder that I created for the board for the district manager position. I think I can let Doug speak about the talking his conversations with Rick. I did reach out to that other firm that I had emailed the board about and they have not gotten back to me. I have got no response.
Whether or not this that other firm had done any government or similar type searches.
Yeah, I was not able to find anything about that on their website, which I put in my email and I reached out and I got no response. So.
Yeah, and I'll just give a quick update on the Basinger and Associates. So they have expertise in this area. I've engaged them a couple of times. They sent me a schedule, kind of a project plan. I did get a message from Rick today saying that they're due to their current schedule, they're not sure if they can take the search on. So I'm going to try to touch base with Rick again tomorrow. Because it's I've looked around. It's really difficult to find specialization in this area. So as of right now, we've got, we've got one potential that as of today said, they're not sure if they got bandwidth, but I'm going to go back and see if we, you know, we can work something out. But there's nothing to say. There's nothing that holds restrict us restricts us from engaging multiple agencies. Because it's contingent. It's the fee is based on placement. So and so you're networking with FASD or its position is posted on FASD. Have we got it posted anywhere else? Any of the other boards?
I have. I can put it on Indeed if you'd like me to. Okay. I was holding out because I didn't want to. If you're going to hire the headhunter.
And from what I understood with conversations that I've had is reasonable timeline, I think maybe even aggressive to some point is probably 90 days. And that's for a proactive passive search. So I think we should be planning for at least a minimum of three months. And I think that might be the best case scenario. You know, but you know, if you have a firm, they're they've got preexisting relationships. There's, you know.
Yep.
So some it's that's that's faster than if we just post and try to network and and find it on our on our own. So but we are, I would say at this point, we're still open to firm solutions because the ones that I've run across just don't have the specialization or they're not used to operating in a government agency, which is is challenging.
Okay, I'm going to go a little out of order on my update as well, since we moved the agenda items around. We did get a request, which is in here from a high school senior Lindsay who would like to he she proposed doing a community garden up by the pool. I told her that I would bring it in front of the board for discussion.
Yeah, we'll just we're going to have to table this.
Yeah, that's fine. I told her that I would let her know. I assumed it would have to be something we need to table, but I just let her know that I would bring it up in front of the board. So I'll let her know that we'll table it. We did get a complaint. Actually, we've gotten several complaints. One of them came through our customer care regarding a specific employee that works for Mainscape. And we made a request to Mainscape to have that person no longer providing services inside of Gateway and that has been handled.
What was the just general?
It was somebody who was parked up by the high school waiting to pick up their kid and the guy was mowing and he stopped and he was just like circling her car with the mower and there I don't know the specifics of it. It was a behavior based thing. Yes. So yeah, so this first that particular employee will no longer be doing anything inside of Gateway. Elle asked me to give an update that because Mr. Tinko, you had asked about the ponds. She asked Aquagenics to be at the next meeting on 10/21 since that's when she gives her update. And so Aquagenics will be here as part of Elle's update at the next board meeting.
Well, I think the issue on that is is that we've had a contract with them for three years. The contract is clear, in my opinion. Why haven't we been on them for the last three years to do their job? This issue of coming up with a boat, they had to have a boat to begin with. They knew that. How the hell they expect to get out there? The bottom line is our staff's not doing their job. I'm going to talk more about that a little bit later, but this this is this ridiculous. That answer I got was ridiculous. We've had a contract for three years, which tells me they've not done anything. They haven't gone to the club. They haven't met with the golf course superintendent to find out how to get a boat over there in there. I can show them how. You take it back behind the 11th hole and you put it in there. We're not talking about launching a cabin cruiser. We're talking about a boat that's going to hit hold a 50 gallon tank. I don't understand this.
They have.
Do what?
They have a boat.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we got a boat right here.
The issue is, the issue is we, our staff is not telling them to do what they have to do in the contract. And my deal is I understand why you don't have them over there in your spot. I don't want them here either. This this is not acceptable. We'll talk more about that in a few minutes, but that that was just that wasn't the answer to come back to me and say that they're having trouble getting in there. Why? How did they sign the contract in the first place? Were they going to use a drone or a helicopter? This is ridiculous. Seven ponds. That's another one. We got a report from staff on our ponds. Why send a report indicating and sending pictures showing those seven ponds? Those seven ponds aren't in the report. How in the hell can we go out and omit seven of our ponds? That's 10% of our ponds weren't even included. Did we have some decision to basically say any pond that's bordering on the golf course is no longer under consideration? Somebody's making decisions around here that they haven't got the shoes to fill. And my deal is I'm not putting up with it anymore. Okay, Laura.
Okay, I do have one other walk on item. Tony and I were working on this over the last week. It's the resolution 2022 dash oh one regarding the SRF financing. The board had made two separate resolutions for the two loans that we currently have outstanding with SRF making Chris the signer for the paperwork for those loans. And this resolution would give the district manager, the interim acting district manager, assistant district manager or business manager the authority to sign any of that paperwork. I have been filling out all of those reports since I've been here. So I'm very familiar with all of the paperwork. And I did check with the FDEP and as far as getting those signers updated and they said all they would need from us would be the updated resolution to show who's authorized to sign.
So I'll make a motion to to make those changes.
Basically, it'd be to adopt. Do you have a resolution number?
2022 dash zero one.
Twenty two.
Sounds like we're filling the blanks.
Yeah.
And what that does. I wasn't going to say anything.
Yeah, what that does, it just means the section room number four, two prior resolutions as to consign the application.
It just used to say district manager, but now it reads district manager, interim slash acting district manager, assistant district manager or business manager are hereby designated.
Can designated to finish the rest of that, Laura?
Oh, is are hereby designated as authorized representatives to provide the assurance and commitments required by the loan application.
So do I have a second?
Check.
All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Great. Thank you.
All right. And then because we moved the agenda items around and I had an update on my report, I'd like to discuss the temporary org chart that I sent out. The reason for that org chart was just in the spirit of transparency because I know that there are currently openings in major openings in the in the organization. And this was just to let the board know how we decided to temporarily manage things until those positions are filled, which is why the Parks and Rec was moved over and out of Public Works. There's nothing under Public Works right now. Currently, Elle shifted over underneath utilities and then those positions under Parks and Rec are just reporting to me just so that Kenny doesn't have to take on that additional burden.
Yeah. And what I'll add is I think when we look at this org structure and decisioning, it has to be, I think we need to face. So I think the org chart, the way it sits today is well, there's two. There should be an actual of what it is today. And then there's one that's the potential. That's the the proposed or potential future state. In my opinion, the Parks and Rec, that split should probably be tabled until we get a better handle on either an interim district manager, probably the public works as well. So I think, in my opinion, I wouldn't make a move on that at this point until we address some of the higher priority movements because that the district manager and the public works, depending on what we can find for those roles. One district manager could is going to take a minimum of three months. If we go in an interim solution, that's fine. But that's going to dictate, in my opinion, what the org is going to look like down the road. I understand, and I was part of the discussion of the Parks and Rec landscaping facilities to pull that out. But the environment has shifted slightly since two or three months ago when we started having that conversation. So our our organization has shifted and is a little different today than it was three months ago. So but I'll I'll go for it. My horoscope this morning said to take a different approach on how you do things today and trust that it will work. So this is a challenge. The softened version. I was appalled that a change of this magnitude would even be suggested without coming to the board. This is a board decision, organizational chart. We had meetings after meetings and you were totally involved in it, Doug, with Joe Disserbo. And I think this board put together an organizational chart and a plan for the future that was fantastic. We had a utilities department. We had a public works department and we had a finance administration department. And we had department heads in each of those. I thought I think that was excellent. And I've even taken and followed up with what Laura did by sending out one that I did myself that captures what I believe is our true org chart. And the one that we approved with with one, well, I take it back with two changes. One, we've agreed to the the position of an assistant district manager. So I put that in here. And then the other one is is that we agreed to have a position of a utilities director. And that was kind of an interim change with with Kennedy. But the org chart that came out, and I'm going to give Laura the benefit of the doubt that she she hasn't been here for the last couple of five years when a lot of this stuff happened. So I'm going to take it just in experience on this chart that she put out, but the district engineer doesn't report to the district attorney. Never has, never will. The district engineer and the district attorney both report to the board of supervisors and the district.
Can I make? That's just the way the line is drawn. It's that that's all that's yeah, that whole.
It's not the way you do an org chart.
I understand. I did. My lines are not correct there.
And I'm not going to get into that. Again, I'm taking the software line. But the blatant deal. Oh, yeah, this is the softer. I was about 25 degrees warmer before. The parks and recreation, there is no way in the world we need a park and recreation department to be pulled out that would be on an equality with utilities, public works and finance. Everybody else under the sun has Parks and Rec and landscaping as part of Public Works. It's common sense. It only makes sense. I had no idea that at our last meeting, the termination of Brian was going to lead to a meeting the next morning on basically rechanging it. You don't change your org chart because you terminate somebody. You work around it. You have dotted lines that fill in. People step up and they do other jobs. So I my deal is is that it is in two parts. The the idea where it came from to promote somebody to this specialist position on the basis of a letter that I got that was shocking to me. She has experience in developing bid specifications and handling the bid process. And we're issuing or proposing to issue a 10K raise. That proposal that went out for the bathymetrics could have been written by a fifth grader. It's a piece of trash. It's worthless. How do you write in one single sentence with 18 words in it? A set of specifications on a $60,000 contract? We we got the cart way way far before the horse. We need somebody in this position and knows what the hell they're doing. I'm totally opposed to that decision of that that promotion and that raise. That that is just flat uncalled for. But where I'm equally opposed is is that going to a member of the staff and indicating that we're going to have a new department and we're going to have a new head of that department and a commensurate raise with that without coming back before the board and separating it out of Public Works. I can see going out as any will remember going out and talking with people. But discussions of that nature have to be prefaced with, I got to take this before the board.
They that is my next action item. There is no new position underneath the Parks and Rec. Those that's existing positions. And this is just to let you know that that's because there is no Public Works right now. So the the people under Parks and Rec, which are the same positions we currently have.
When did the Public Works live?
We don't have anyone here right now. There's no one in that position. So it but it made it easier and cleaner in my mind and I which is why I laid it out this way, just so that you could I could show that right now the Parks and Rec parts shifted out and those people are reporting to me.
Well, my lead in to all of this, Laura, my lead into all of this is is that we need somebody in here helping us. We're going to get to that discussion next. But at this point in time, my thought on all of this is get somebody in here to where you can wear two hats. You handle Public Works, which would be inclusive of Parks and Recreation and Finance Administration. You handle those and then let this other firm that would have the expertise handle the utilities. The only deal that I would agree with and and have because it's happening. And that is to take our pond issue, stormwater management system and divide it into two components. The component of construction, operation and maintenance, which just undoubtedly makes sense to go to Kenny. I mean, these people are doing it. It just makes sense. But leave the stormwater management, the stuff like the the ponds and wetlands and the the aquatic maintenance contracts, the littoral maintenance, that type of service, leave that under where it should be, under Public Works. And have that specialist underneath there to do those contracts and do those things that have to be done, which would include the bathymetrics, the aeration as we go down the road. But I see absolutely no reason whatsoever to create our Parks and Recreation Landscape, our Parks and Rec. We have a frigging swimming pool. That's our park. Well, let me let me give you some background on this really quick. So the this is something that Chris had brought. Chris and staff had brought to our to my attention months ago. The idea to split that out to have more specialization in the public works area. A lot of that had to do with. That's funny because Chris had indicated to me he didn't know anything about this. Well, that's. He just told me he had. He knew nothing about this. He said he had nothing to do with any separation out that public that the Parks and Rec and landscaping was a part of. And what he told you wasn't wasn't accurate. And Laura. Are you saying are you saying that he said he would recommend taking out and having four departments instead of three? Because he told me no way, no way in hell. That's we had open discussion around. Why would that? Separating Public Works because of span of control with the leader that we had at that time. And with the potential of the park coming through, you know, that so there was there could be much larger responsibility for that role. Now that has changed basically what with the current, you know, I think with the current condition. So this is just a draft.
This is this is a temporary. It's a temporary org chart.
Yeah, it's.
It's in the spirit of transparency. So you can understand where people are currently reporting.
It was in the spirit of transparency. It would have been introduced before it was brought to staff. And there was the implications. They were going to get raises and they were going to get movement. One employee, as I understand, as I understand who thought that he was going to be in that new department, came in and asked, hey, I've I've got other options here. When am I going to get my raise? And the district manager said, I don't know what the heck you're talking about. Now that tells me what you just said. Yeah, it's not. Because he said he didn't know it. So we're saying that Chris lying to us. If that's what he told you, then yes. That's what he told me. Well, whether it is or not, I'm sticking to the fact that we spent months and thousands of dollars with Joe Disserbo to develop what I think, and I've got one right here from another community and great example. We're getting sidetracked. No, we're not getting sidetracked. This is important. This is what a typical C D D exactly like ours would look like. Before we made these changes, this mirrors ours. Okay, well, let's pause for a second. But my thing is right now. To other other individuals. But my point is right now I am opposed to the the position that was made on the the specialist, totally opposed to that. And I am absolutely opposed to pulling Parks and Rec out when we're talking about Parks and Rec. And we were talking about the Parks and Rec of the city of Fort Meyer. You might be talking about a separate department, but even in the city of Fort Meyer, it's not a separate department. It's under Public Works.
So again, this is, this is open. That's the great thing about having a board. You've got five voices that have input. And then we, we have the open discussion and we make a recommendation. So uh, again, what I'll caveat is there was an org chart that was sent out that was a draft that was really, really in process almost a couple of months ago.
It was what?
It was kind of put, that, that discussion was happening, had happened a couple of months ago.
With who?
With staff.
The board does the org chart, not staff. The board does. It's, you, you would come to the board first to get their thoughts before you go and do that.
No, we, we allow, we, we charge the district manager with the org, with the organizational chart.
The district manager knew nothing about.
That's not true.
That's not true. Cause actually I will tell you this, Chris is actually the one that showed me this chart before. So I don't know Ed, what conversation you had with him, but I know what Chris said to me. It was not in line what you're saying now. Um, so I, I, I'm actually shocked because he, he's the one that I, I literally even printed it to, for me.
So you're, you're saying Flavi, I want to make sure I understand this. You're saying that Chris showed you this revised chart that divides our uh, uh, district into four department heads. He's, you saw that from Chris.
I saw that. He didn't say it was final. He, he says that this is what he was working on, like the staff was working on. Uh, he didn't say specifically it was him or Laura or whatever else, but I saw it at the office. And I'm talking about a week, a little before I left, weeks back.
Bobby, I think what we want to talk about is what we think the structure should be. That's focusing our conversation on what we think the structure should be and today, and I think what it is right now is there's no changes. So what we have today is what we have is basically what you played out. That's the structure we have today. That's what's in place. That's what's approved. That's what we're operating on. Is the utility manager, uh, business manager and public works, even though public works is vacant and district manager is vacant. So right now we've got Kenny is uh, who's, who's overseeing uh, public works right now? It's kind of you and Kenny.
We're splitting it based on what it is. Yes.
Which is what you do when you have a base.
That's what you do.
Yep. The only thing with our current structure is it doesn't have my role in it or approve my, my new role. The assistant district manager role is not in, we never redid the org chart after.
Well, that's right. So that's, that's neat. That's needed, that needs to be formally updated in the.
And I have no problem moving Parks and Rec. I mean, back under public work where it was, I said, I didn't do it with the intention of creating a new department. I did it to show you kind of how we divided things in the interim until these positions can be filled.
So which.
Was.
What's the discussion?
Right, right, right now, my deal is, is motion is, is that I am totally opposed to those two uh elevations or offers. I'm assuming that they're offers because they'd have to come before the board.
Position hasn't even been approved yet for the, the Parks and Rec. That's a separate.
And the environmental specialist.
Well, the environmental specialist, Chris promoted that role and, and with the support of Kenny and Laura. So that position and that he had, he was within his right to do that, district manager.
And again, Doug, I, I I'm shocked. Chris told me just the opposite. He didn't know about it.
I went in and talked to him about it before I even said anything to.
Chris, Chris wanted to terminate the position.
I, I called Chris because Laura, Laura had, had called me and said, hey, here's, here's um something we're thinking about doing. Kenny supports it. Chris supports it. I called Chris and said, hey, just want to, uh, and I think it might've been after you had sent an email out. And I said, hey, Chris, this is probably going to come at the board meeting. Just want to make sure that you fully supported this move because I think there might be some discussion. He says, no, absolutely. Fully support it. Uh, had conversation with Kenny.
I stood in his office and talked to him about it.
And I was going to say same here. I actually went to his office and, and he actually was praising how in regards to this promotion, he thought it was, it was great. He uh, I even asked, you know, about when is her review was coming up because he was leaving. If there was anything that needed to be added by him, that would have been beneficial. But I was at his office when he told me the same thing.
Well, let's, 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 let's do this. I'll give you all the benefit of the doubt. Let's say he did, but he told me he didn't. But I'm still going to go on. There's no merit, no justification for the position. That example of what you told me why you gave it to her is, is ridiculous. You don't send out a one sentence request for proposal, no specification. I sent it to Tony. This is ridiculous. It's not how you do business. It's not how you do business. So if, if the person doesn't know that, then that, that, that was strike one. Strike two is the fact that don't come back and tell me that the guy's got a problem figuring out how to get his boat in the lake. Give me a break. That's, that's not your job. Your job was to prepare a set of specifications. We did. Your job is to monitor and verify those specifications are being met. You didn't. And it's not only you didn't, you haven't for three years. I don't know what else there is, but I am totally opposed to that change in position.
Okay. Well, the position is in place. Uh, if there's a formal motion you'd like to make, you can, you can.
I, I just make the motion that that, I, I'm assuming it has not been made. But you're telling me now that Chris made it, which is contrary to what Chris told me. But if it is, my deal is to overrule it and say that that be removed.
There's a motion any second. Okay, motion does.
Okay. My next motion is L's going to be working on the work.
So as it stands, org stays intact with the addition of the assistant district manager.
Okay. And will that be um basically like it is?
Two, two deals. You're going to keep it intact as the way it currently is. We're adding the assistant district manager. And we are separating the duties of stormwater management into both the public works department and into the utilities. I don't know why you would do that Doug. It's an interim. Kenny, Kenny's people do all the construction.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Uh, yeah. And I think we.
That, that only makes sense.
Been previous conversations around that. Now, I, there's no issue with that Laura, right?
No.
Matter of fact, I think that was, that, that's, that conversation's actually been, been floated around for a while. So you're right. So those, those two.
No, I have no.
So the construct, just so that I'm, I'm clear, the um my, the assistant district manager role would layer in like it shows up on the screen where that I, that role reports to the district manager and then everything else funnels up through that. And then we're going to separate the stormwater management into uh, the construction part would go under utilities and then the ponds and those things would go under um, basically under.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then, you know, uh, Parks and Rec stays the same and we're, we're going to have to table any discussion on that.
Okay.
Uh, other priorities are taken.
All right. So consider. So. Item four D is not happening.
Which, which ultimately will, will dotted line up.
It's dotted line to, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with that.
And I will correct my lines on the top line, Mr. Dinko. I missed those. I did them down in the bottom correctly and I missed the ones at the top.
Well, I had them both, Laura, I had them both ways.
Yeah, I, I miss my visio.
The opportunity that I wasn't the author, I was the uh, the, the conveyor. It's always easier.
I miss visio.
It's always easier to be the editor.
Yeah. Flowcharting is much easier in visio than it is in PowerPoint.
I agree. I, you, you haven't been around long enough on this. So, but my deal was is that there's the, the district engineer and the district attorney, as does the financial specialist and committees all report to the board.
Yes.
But they also report to the district manager.
Okay.
That's, yes, they also.
All right. I will have an updated chart to bring to the meeting on the twenty-first with those changes.
Uh, so let me jump back up to uh, so let's see.
Uh, oh, I have, uh, where are we? Three. We didn't have the updates.
So, so my deal is, is the lack of second on my motion. Uh, that means that the position that or the salary adjustment that was offered uh stays.
And I would say if there's, if there's concerns, I would.
I'll have a different motion at the next meeting.
Yeah. And I have one comment about that and I want to make sure it's right in my mind. And admittedly it's clouded right now because Chris left, but that would have been a decision that the district manager would have, could have, should have made.
Yes, that is correct.
And that doesn't need to come here. It's just normal course of business.
Now, what we do ask and what I have asked Chris is anytime there is a, and a staff appointment made by the district manager, that it be brought back to the board for awareness.
Okay.
Cause we haven't asked him.
You're dead right. That's exactly right. But my, my answer and my whole discussion has been on the basis that did not happen.
I, I.
And quite, and quite obviously this, this means I was flat lied to. And I, I'm just having a real hard time, but I'll get about that.
So Laura, let's just talk about process just for a second.
If it's a question of an individual's functioning and performance, you know, that's a different question altogether, not to be.
So let's, let's talk about process just for a second. Cause I think it's, I mean, Ed brings up a very valid point. There should be a chain of command and there should be uh, an offer letter presented. Anytime there is a promotion internally and it should be signed off by the district manager. So do we have?
Yes.
Signed by Chris.
Yes.
There was an offer signed by Chris and.
An offer letter signed by Chris on what?
On the stormwater specialist promotion.
The title change and raise were both signed off by Chris.
And, and this was uh, on that uh, Friday morning.
Uh, the, the seventeenth, I think it was. Yes, the Friday.
All right. Okay, great. So let's keep moving. And again, this is, this is why we have good dialogue. So there is, there's E. Uh, okay. So do we have, we've got um, Robert with Florida West and then we have the use of the outside firm. We don't just go in order D and then E, doesn't matter.
Say it again.
So we've got Robert here. Um, so this is uh, Robert Pelcham with Florida West Partnership Proposal.
Uh, I would, I, I thought you were going to go on ahead to the, you know, district management, but.
Well, we'll see yourself.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We'll have, come on in.
Go ahead.
When you get up to the phone, just announce who you are and who you're representing for the record.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, this is Robert Pelcham. I'm the president CEO of Florida West F C. Profit. Um, well, thank you for having me back. Um, ultimately I'm assuming all of you have received uh, uh, our business proposal and you guys had a chance to review it. And I'm hoping you have there's some difficult questions for me. And then we can pretty much address maybe also some of the false information um, that is maybe out there and um, you know, can go over that because I know there have been some concerns of uh, kids being, you know, priced out of uh, competition and things like that. And um, you know, I've said from the first moment that that's not the case. So like I said, any questions, um, I'm here to answer.
So I, I, I assume everyone's kind of gone through the proposal. So I don't think Robert needs to go through it. Uh, is there any, any specific questions? I'll open it up.
Yeah, yeah. What uh, thanks for the proposal. Uh, very intrigued. Uh, my thing is, is that uh, you offer us an alternative that looks like it might uh, go a ways toward uh, uh, easing some of our pain on the expenses associated with this whole thing. I think the next thing should be that we immediately a group that will prepare a request for proposals. That specifications, real specifications. And thank you for what you've given us because you give us the, the, the basis of preparing that scope of work. And we send that out and we advertise with, to the firms that would be interested in doing this. And we get bids back and we'll have bids, we'll have lines, we'll have costs and we'll have, whether it be a lump sum or unit price, that has to be determined. But there are other things that I'm interested in that go beyond, let's say, three years. We know we got an issue and an ongoing issue with that turf out there. We know that we have an ongoing issue out there with drainage. We know we have an ongoing issue out there with those lights. Unless Florida changes its time deal to where we get more daylight, uh, we, we gotta have lights. And that's a major expense, half to three quarters of a million bucks. I'd like to have a plan that people like you that would come in and say, I'm looking at a partnership, not for one year, three years. I'm looking for a long-term partnership. How are we going to solve these costs that are burdening the residents?
Right. So if I may quickly address that, so the three-year plan is obviously, uh, you know, I'm, 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 I'm somebody who works on actual facts and, and realistic projections, not wishful thinking. And then this is something where I figured, okay, three years right now out uh, would be a realistic assessment. Uh, we are definitely in the, I mean, for us, it's a long-term project. So, so this is, goes beyond that, but I don't think it makes a lot of sense to put a chart uh, twenty years out if we don't know how everything develops. And I didn't even know whether you guys are interested in entertaining this, you know.
And Robert, how long have you been operating?
Well, experience in this line of work, thirty years, but uh, we are as an organization, we've been in place uh, for about thirty years. And uh, we just rekind of structured our, our business model and we're doing businesses Florida West F C. And that was done pretty much to incorporate the entire entirety of South Florida. Because before it was just simply different organization having their little location. And um, it was a very selfish approach. And you know, I've, I've also doing work for U S Soccer. And I think uh, the only way to actually further youth development and youth soccer in this, in this area and anywhere in the U S is actually working together, collaborating and uh, trying to bring people together. And I've fully with two other organizations already over the last two years. And ultimately that's what I'm also trying to do with the eight way district.
What's your typical contract?
Uh, can you specify that? Like contract? There, there is none. Ultimately what is happening is I speak to these organizations that have been in place. And oftentimes it's done by um, parent volunteers. They just trying to make sure that the kids get to play and everything. Ultimately my proposal to them is, listen, let me come in, let me run this organization professionally. And I'll make sure there's growth and potential for all the kids in South Florida to play and also providing scholarship opportunities. And um, these boards usually are very happy for that because you know what? The day and age that we worked and you know, where, where volunteers have a lot of time on their hands, doesn't work. I have, I have six full-time employees and thirty part-time and they're all working on a W two. So uh, you know, as much as we want to have volunteers uh, contributing, it's just not a realistic model anymore these days.
Brian, uh, uh, former uh, public works director has, had indicated to us that we can be looking at between a half and a million dollars over the next three to four years in upgrades. How would you handle those as far as an expense in doing a bid schedule, for lack of a better term, uh, in, in the way of a contract with us?
Well, this is, this is the, this is the hard part because there are a lot of variables. It comes ultimately down, our, our revenue comes from membership fees. We have certainly a sponsor, but not in the capacity where we could, you know, cover these sort of expenses. Um, as I put in the proposal, um, you know, right now I put it at a hundred and twenty-five thousand uh, dollar projection for the next three years. Um, I guess the best way to demonstrate is what I'm proposing is that we can do a lot better and you guys can do a lot better than what you've done so far. I cannot promise you, I cannot guarantee you that we will be able to cover these expenses in the next four to five years. But what I can guarantee you is that we will be able to do a whole lot better uh, for you than you have done so far with the existing uh, vendors that you are entertaining at this facility.
I, I'm just going by what he had said. It was a half, half to a million dollars. Uh, the, the writing to me is, is these bubble gum and baling wire holding it together. Uh, we might've bought it a couple of years, but that's the best we're going to have. And that's a very expensive portion. My deal is, is that in reality, what are the residents of this community looking at that they're going to absorb on this without taking or less better yet? What can the residents are planning on that we're going to pass on to somebody else to absorb before you sink the ship?
Absolutely. And uh, one thing is that, you know, these costs, that is obviously something for the board for you guys to review. Um, where we can really step in, where I see immediate improvement possibilities is, like I said, the infrastructure that is in place right now. There's a lot of um, equipment out there that's probably by safety standards, not even safe anymore. And so we can contribute that. We would like to uh, you know, build equity ultimately within the organization here and uh, you know, be a long-term partner. And so that means, you know, can we work out on a, on a, uh, in a, in a contractual agreement, obviously? If we invest, if we uh, put actual financial uh, support in uh, on, on um, artificial turf, you know, these are things that are gonna be questions, you know, lights and things like that. How much equity can we as an organization build and be a, actually a long-term partner for you too? Because what we don't want to do is, you know, invest and then ultimately in two, three years, you guys say, well, yeah, well, now thanks, thanks for all of this. And now we are looking for someone else. So this is a long-term project for us for sure, you know.
Bill, any questions from you?
No.
Flavia?
No.
So, yeah, we'll have to have some additional internal conversations on potential next steps, but.
Yeah, I'd like to get a request for proposals put out as quick as possible uh, to, to anybody that's interested. Yeah, I'd like to get a request for proposals put out as quick as possible, uh, to, to anybody that's interested in doing this. Uh, you, you provide us basically with the backbone to put this together. Uh, there's not many, uh, things that you haven't touched on. Uh, my concern was the timing, uh, and I think you've answered that. But you, you don't have any crystal ball anymore than we do.
Right.
Of how far this is going to go out. It may come down that, that there's just so much money that can be put into this. And whatever that is, whatever's left is going to be ours to absorb somehow, some way.
Yeah. And I think ultimately what my position is, is we want to maintain, we want to offer services to the community. Uh, and we want to, I mean, really we're offering it for gateway residents. But in order to have adequate leagues, we have to expand that outside in order, you know, to have the size that we need. So that's why we kind of mandate, you know, what we're trying to do is at least 50% gateway versus non gateway in our recreational. So?
One other question. Have you, because I've been dealing with the county commissioners. Have you had any clients that's working through the county on using any of this COVID money, grant money to do improvements? That's one place where I wouldn't have a problem with going after grant money. Because there's a stipulation that you don't discriminate who uses it.
Well, I think this is.
And we're doing that.
This might be a little unique because I think we, we privately own these fields. Most of the other facilities that Robert and his organization use are as a partnership with the county.
Yes, yes, we are fully county.
My point, my point, my point is bringing it up is that I'm going to say this later to Laura. Let's get with the county commissioners and the office downtown and find out, they're sitting on millions of dollars. Now there's some catches on it, but it's grant money. It's grant money. Let's find out if we can go in because this is one place that we're not going to upset the apple cart because it's already like being used by people outside the community. So if we would get grant money to, let's say, do the lights or get grant money to do the turf or get grant money.
Even, even eco-friendly type solutions.
To go, to go to AstroTurf or something like that. Why wouldn't we do that?
Solar lighting, whatever.
Well, there's LEDs.
We have LEDs ready. Yeah, we do have LEDs.
If, if I may ask, uh, one question, so if this is obviously when you say this is going to be, because again, for me it was, I, I thought I was the only person, uh, discussing this with you guys. And as a, as a proposal, we are ready to start January 1st. That sounds like a long-term, uh?
I don't want long-term. I want this done quick.
Okay.
It would have to be executed by the first of the year.
I'd like, I'd like to take and get a bids, bid document put together. And this is not, if we would put one out, we put one out, it's got 18 words in one sentence. I think we might do a little better on this.
So Tony, just, uh, as a follow-up, uh, something significant like a, a management entity for the field. Um, does it, I just want to make sure, does it require us to bid that out?
No, it, it would be an invitation for proposals, request for proposals, request for qualifications. It's not statutory required, but I think what I've seen, I think counties and municipalities, they will, so those proposals.
I just want to make sure we're, we're operating within what, what we do, what we?
You're not required to, but I can often do that.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I, like I said, I just wanted to throw it out there. We are ready to roll on January 1st. Uh, we are very interested in working with the current entities on there, ultimately having conversations. So just wanted to make sure that you guys also know that we are, we are ready to roll on this, uh, as soon as you?
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks for putting this together.
And if we have any follow-up, we'll go through Laura and just say?
Absolutely.
Very good. Self-explanatory for both.
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to, uh, let's, uh, 3E, so use of outside firm as interim solution to open district manager position. So I think the conversation is we're still working to secure a firm. In the interim, I, it's, I think based on what I'm seeing, it's going to take a minimum of probably 90 days. Uh, I think Supervisor Tinko had brought up the idea of should we be looking at an interim solution? Uh, there's probably a couple of different entities that could provide the service. Before we started, you know, putting something together and have, having firms come in to give proposals or presentations. I think we at least wanted to get a hold of, or, you know, are we in agreement that an interim solution is something that we should be looking at? Um, so I will stop and see what kind of comments we have from the other board members.
Uh, Lee says I was the one that brought this up. Uh, well, my, my deal is real simple, uh, is to immediately recommend that we retain the services of premier district management on a pro temp basis for up to six months to assume the district, uh, manager and public works manager position. Uh, may take several months to, as you noted, uh, earlier, uh, to, to fill this position. I, I think 90 days is, is dreaming. Uh, we're going to have to go outside, we're going to have to go nationwide to find somebody. And I think, uh, people up north are looking for a reason to get out some of those states up there that, uh, let's say, um, are in trouble and to come down to the sunshine and get, uh, uh, enjoy what's down here. Uh, the reason I say premier district management, uh, they are currently managing seven other CDDs in our area. Uh, not the least of which Heritage Ponds, which is very, or Heritage Palms, which is very similar to what we've got. Uh, maybe not in size, but in the stormwater management system. Uh, I believe that we can get them in for a fee that would be, uh, less than the amount of money that we would be paying or paying if Chris was here and with the business manager here. Uh, they would have a team, uh, Gary Rollings, uh, would be the onsite manager, be here four days a week. Uh, he would be, uh, uh, working with Scott Connell, uh, who could provide, uh, Kenny with backup on utility related issues. Uh, finally Cal would serve as the project manager and direct charge of contract performance. Uh, keep in mind Cal was responsible for the hiring of both, uh, Chris and Leslie. Uh, two very effective appointments that were made, uh, here at, uh, Gateway CDD. And more than anything, Cal could help us going forward with that district, uh, nationwide search. Uh, the premier district management team as our interim district manager offers falling in. Again, I, I want to emphasize interim. I am not giving in on the fact that, that the plan that we came up with Joe Disserbo is not in the long-term best interest of this community. But I also know that going out and trying to find what some of our residents think is, can be found on a, uh, uh, a street corner. It's not that simple. Uh, Cal and Scott have both managed operations of GS CDD and the recent past are familiar with our priorities. They have a strong management team with two former city managers. They can keep the ball rolling from day one. They could just come in here tomorrow and it would be like nothing changed at all. They're experienced in the CDD and utilities management, daily budget control, staff and contract management. They have a wealth of, uh, knowledge in pond, uh, bank restoration, surface water and littoral management narration. Uh, then Bob, that they were very, uh, interested in, uh, looking at alternatives on the pond bank operation to try to keep those costs down also. The big one, they have no conflict of interest. Uh, they both enjoyed a working relationship with our attorney and still work with him on another CDD. They currently manage other utility building, CDD building systems. They understand our organizational structure and they can make it work during this interim, uh, period without, uh, necessary interim hirings and title changes. And big one, they understand chapter 190 very well and they understand sunshine laws. My, uh, recommendation is, is that we bring them in at our next meeting on the 21st to present a formal contract to, uh, provide us with interim district management services. We need help. We need help.
Ed, for how long? Three months, you said?
Thirty to six, 90 days, uh, to six months.
Until we get somebody.
Until we get somebody.
Okay. I, I got it again. And then in addition, was to go ahead and use the headhunter to find a district manager for us? Or we're just going to be relying on them to find a replacement for us?
Yeah. So here's the, so here's a couple of options. So if a, a firm is going to cost us about 30K on, on, at a minimum.
For permanent replacement.
For, 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 to hire a contingent firm to, to go and fund, it's going to cost a minimum of 30K.
Of what?
For a contingent fee for an agency.
For a headhunter.
For a headhunter, minimum 30. And I'd probably say, you know, it could be a little south of that because everyone's jacking up their prices right now because of demand. So what I would recommend is if we go this route, if the board agrees that this is the right decision, I almost think that we could partner, uh, with these individuals because they do have some expertise in the area. And maybe we could leverage some of those dollars, um, in sponsored jobs or, you know, open, just doing some other things. So it may allow us to fund this service, uh, through that agency.
Well, I believe they're going to come in with a proposal that is significantly less than what we are, would have been paying for the two positions.
Yeah. So, I mean, it won't be, we can't get them for 30K all in, but so, I mean, and so my position is I would be willing to maybe hold off for 60 days, uh, because we don't have anyone secure today. I mean, the, the top firm that I would have recommended, they just say they don't have bandwidth. So maybe they would have bandwidth in 60 days. It allows us to repurpose those dollars for, uh, to go with someone that, you know, for the most part knows. I, I have nothing bad to say about Scott, uh, and I've worked with Cal for, and I have nothing bad to say. The only thing is these were individuals that were part of this district during times that were not optimal. But again, I, I don't blame them directly. So, uh, so, uh, Bill, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
You would, huh? Well, I think we're gonna absolutely need, uh, some professionals to help us both on a day-to-day basis and also to look for a full-time, uh, district manager and/or, and/or budget director. And, uh, my experience in working with these things, that there's, there's no perfect solution. But there's no solution unless you get with it. And, uh, if, if you, if you have a, if you have a solution, uh, gotta go ahead and with it. If it works, that's wonderful. If it doesn't work so well, you can terminate it and, and, and go a different direction. But we really need to get, uh, we really need to get cracking.
Uh, Flavia, uh, your, your position on this?
I actually, I agree with Bill. I don't have anything to add.
She said she agrees with Bill, which ultimately agrees with you.
So I need to add an agenda item to the next meeting and to have them?
And Bob, you're in support?
Oh, yeah. Um, it seems like a golden opportunity to keep running while we're looking. It takes a lot of pressure off on the look.
Yeah.
Because we've got people who know us, know the organization, know the district to kind of pitch it for a short-term period of three, six months or whatever it takes. So it's, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah. And I also look at it too as an opportunity, even like Laura, you stepping into this role. You've worked alongside Chris. I think this would give you some additional exposure to, to other individuals that would help you continue to grow your role.
I'm actually looking forward to it.
To me, I think it's setting you up for success.
I'm looking forward to it.
I totally agree. Yeah. Okay. All right. So if you'll put that on the agenda, um, make it, make do it.
I can't hear you.
Can't hear you either.
Yeah. Six months with an earlier termination. That way you don't have to say 90 to 60 months, 90 days to six months.
Yeah. Excellent thought. Uh, I, I think the big thing that we need to do is, is that, uh, get a notification out to Cal such that he can get back prior to that meeting, uh, the, the documents that we need to be looking at. We don't need to be sitting here and, and, and.
You need to call Cal.
I, I can take care of that.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's going to happen, but, uh, the, the issue is, is that so that everybody's up to speed such that we don't lose time at that meeting. We can come in and have straight questions to get off the table quickly and get this thing on, on the ground and running.
Yeah. We don't need to debate it for three months.
We don't need to debate it for three months.
The big question, are these guys sure they want to come in and do this?
Get them before they change their mind.
I'll ask really nice.
Alcohol was not involved in the discussion.
I'll ask nicely.
Just for the sake of, is there any other, is there any other firm that can do this that we want to include as well?
There's one.
I can't hear.
I'm sorry, Bill. There's one, but they got a conflict of interest. So I'm not even going to go there.
So we're comfortable with the single, with the single solution?
I'm, I'm.
Well, it is, it is a solution. If, if something surfaces between now and the next meeting.
Right.
Then we can consider that also.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're?
Yeah. When you, when you take and look at the, the things that where we have right now, uh, the exposure, uh, there's, I don't think anybody would argue that, uh, the loss of Chris on the utility side and all of the issues that we have related to utilities, uh, will, will benefit Kenny a hell of a lot to have somebody that's on that, that deal. The, the other side where it helps with, uh, uh, on Laura, when she gets the experience of dealing with another manager type person. But the issues of business and finance that we have setting that until we have that position, this would delay that and allow her to be wearing a public works hat and a finance and business hat.
Well, there's a lot of great knowledge you can get from Scott and from Cal. So, uh, I think it's great. So, okay. Um, so let's keep moving. Um, I think we have as far as action items.
Uh, Leslie's A, 4A. We haven't done that. She's been waiting patiently.
Okay. Uh, Leslie, so we're moving on to action items for a, uh, water, wastewater irrigation utility rates.
Yes. Uh, Leslie, Rittoric Utility Building Manager. Um, I put this agenda together as we were working on, um, the rate study. I was working with Chris. Um, I have Tony Harrison with Rittoris. Going to do a short overview, uh, update to the rate study that was done or presented in April of this year. Um, Tony, are you online?
I'm here, Leslie. I'll do a sound check. Can you all hear okay?
Yes, we can hear.
Very good.
A quick review and answer any questions and the agendas to propose a budgetary and moving forward.
Okay. I will go quickly through some of these slides. Feel free to stop me because some of this should look familiar. Um, and I guess you can refer to me as Tony H to not be confused with, uh, your district attorney. Um, so?
Suggest that also to the record. We've had these conversations.
Okay. Um, and there's been, as I said before, presented various, uh, forms of this before. And, uh, the one thing I'll say is we've updated some projections and so forth. The end result, uh, where you're ending up is pretty much the same. Um, and we've fine-tuned some of the comparisons, um, based on a review of what your, your customers actually use. So that's the short version. Uh, Leslie, you go to the next slide. Um, so just the background, the purpose of this is, uh, is this to develop a sustainable rate financial plan for the utility system, um, for the water, uh, wastewater and irrigation as well. And, you know, there's all the details behind it. There is a technical report that I believe is in your packet, um, pretty detailed. So I can, if there's any questions there, I'd be happy to answer as I, as I go through this. The next slide, um, provides some of the changes. Um, there's been a, a few, uh, presentations this year. Um, last large one was April 15th. Since then we've updated the financial forecast. Um, one of the things we changed is we reviewed the reserve levels and I have a, a new slide on that. But we used, um, existing connection fee reserves and spent them down, not all the way, but we use those on growth-related projects and that allowed the unrestricted reserves to stay above, uh, our minimal target, uh, as I'll show you in a minute. Uh, there's also some other updates to the forecast, um, and the capital plan, some of those projects, the ones that are debt funded are a little bit further out. They were going to be happening this year with the SRF debt coming online, uh, actually this fiscal year. Now that's two fiscal years away when that debt is going to impact, um, the system. Um, the rate increases, uh, we had the starting, um, uh, we have them now starting in January proposed. It was going to be mid-year. Uh, one of the things as, as we've gone through iterations of this, the board actually has rate and a rate increase that it actually implemented this year. So because that's already happened now, uh, it basically, basically took the place of, uh, what we were proposing to do. So we've just basically realigned the rates and where they're going to be at the end of the rate phasing, uh, to be in the same place. And it's recognizing that your rates have already gone up this year and the next proposed rate increase would be in January. Um, and here in a few months. Uh, so the percentages are going to look lower because again, you're starting off with a higher base in the rates. Um, and I mentioned the fund balances to you, and we've also updated the irrigation rate comparisons. Uh, the next slide is, um, just the, uh, projection on the revenue sufficiency of the three systems and water. We're playing, we're playing, uh, catch up there. Um, and then you see the irrigation, the upper right and the wastewater as well. All the details are in the technical report. Um, next slide, this is, uh, information in the technical report, but it's one that we haven't really focused on before. Uh, this shows the first two rows are your ending reserve balances in utilities. The first row is unrestricted. So for? So for any any use, any purpose, we're keeping above six months of reserves. Utilities or capital intensive operations and six, yeah, at least six months you want to keep on hand, which is a three million dollar mark. We're staying there above every year based on the forecast. Same with connection fees. There, we're actually spending them down on expansion projects as well. So this is fully funding the capital with the rates that we have proposed. And then importantly, the debt service coverage, which is a annual cash flow test. You're very strong. You see it dip there in twenty twenty four. That's because that new debt service comes online. You want to be above a one point five, you're well above that. So this is a very strong forecast. Next slide. These are the percentage rate increases. Again, the percentages are are lower and calibrated based on your newer rates. That were implemented during fiscal year twenty twenty one. Really what's important is to show what the impact is to the customer. And that's where we've got, and on the next slide. To show you what the impact is to your typical customer. And on the top is a four thousand gallon user per month. On our previous. Presentations, we use seven thousand gallons, but in fact, seven thousand gallons is what your bi monthly bill is. So your rates are presented on a monthly basis. So what we did is we showing your your bill on a monthly basis. To get a bi monthly bill, you just double it. And that's what someone would pay over a two month period. This is just what it is per month. Your average use, your your average use for residential is a little bit less than four thousand gallons a month. So most of your customers kind of fit within this window of four thousand. Gallons per month. And we have a phase going from today through twenty twenty five to fund all the capital and everything. And I'll show this compared to other utilities as well. But that endpoint is largely the same of where it's been. This whole progression of the rate study throughout this calendar year as well. And then you see the irrigation impacts. Again, before we showed, I think it was twenty seven thousand gallons per month. That is actually the bi monthly average usage for residential irrigation. So again, we're showing fourteen thousand gallons per month. Here for the irrigation impact. The next slide is the comparison. Before we get to irrigation, this is just the water sewer, basically indoor use. You're at the the low end still here today. This is the rates which would go into effect in January compared with what these other utilities are now. Every year, most of these do index or have some active rate increase. So as yours phases in, theirs will phase in as well. But this is a comparison of what these fees look like today with where yours would be in January. You're at the low end and you're gonna stay near the low end for the very foreseeable future. Okay, now we're gonna go back to irrigation. This slide is the same as before on irrigation. I just want to point out again. That what what's happening in irrigation is two things. You have block rates where as people use every month more water. The higher the usage is per thousand gallons. So. Most users are in that zero to twenty five thousand gallons and most users are five eight cents, that very first row. So we're condensing what I'll call the cheap water to only be fifteen thousand gallons. This is per month. Most users use around fourteen thousand, as I showed in a prior slide. So this, this is where most users are. That rate goes from fifty cent, fifty cents to sixty cents. And then they get into the higher rate, dollar eighty rate, and then the three dollar sixty rate. They get in earlier in their monthly usage. So that increases the bill. But as I show you, the irrigation is very inexpensive, just when you compare it to indoor use, when you compare it to others. So you're phasing in and and my guess over time, you will probably want to continue phasing in higher irrigation rates because it's. You know, it it is lower than. Your indoor use and it's lower than others as well. As I show in the next two slides. The next slide is fourteen thousand gallons of irrigation under those proposed rates compared to other nearby providers. It's not even close. I will say, most of these others do not offer reclaimed or other alternative sources. I know in Benita Springs, there is a reclaim provider in some of the service area and those rates are lower than what is shown here for BSU. But they're not where you are. They're, you know, they're in the thirty dollar range for for that. So the irrigation is very inexpensive and it remains so, even those those bills are going up. The next slide shows a master meter comparison for a typical one using three hundred thousand gallons. Again, much lower than others as well. And one of the things in response to a question from a prior presentation is what? If you break it down to a a large multifamily and they have multiple units, and if you look at it, convert everything to a unit basis. Or cost per thousand ga- basis, what does that look like? So that next slide, I'll spend just a moment on to show what your customers. And these are real example from your billing system. We pulled out representative. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm a step ahead of myself. These are representative. These are single family, master meter and three different commercial customers. And this just shows their impact. You know, they're all gonna go out. As I showed before and and mentioned to you, these rates are very inexpensive. So, you know, it's something as as there may be rate pressure in the future to fund any future capital needs and so forth. There there's there's probably more room in irrigation than any of the other, any of these other services. You know, the average cost here is not on this slide, but if you take the proposed bill divided by the usage of thousand gallons. It's between eighty five cents to a dollar thirty per thousand gallons. It's very inexpensive compared to what, say, an indoor user is. Where it's over four dollars per thousand. So if we go to the next slide is the.
We've got about five minutes, not to not to rush you, but.
I I only need two minutes, so unless you have a long question. So this one is the master meter comparison. And really what to look at is a customer A is a very typical customer. And we just took the annual use divided by the number of units, divided by twelve and showed that they use fourteen thousand seven hundred. That's the fourteen point seven per month. And the use per unit is thirteen dollars. It's a big bill. What you divide it through by the number of units is thirteen dollars. If you divide the bill through the gallons, it's eighty nine cents. You compare customer A to a single family residential that uses fourteen thousand, they're paying twelve dollars and sixty three cents. They're paying about ninety cents. It's extremely comparable. Customer B and C, they're higher on that right column per thousand gallons. The reason being is their average usage is a lot less. So they have base charges that aren't spread over more gallons. If they use more, their bill would be higher, but the cost per thousand would be less. And so that's why you get the variation in the right side, but that all makes sense. It's the way it's designed. Final slide is connection fees. We were asked to look at those. This is for new connections for the infrastructure. We did a high level review. We didn't scrub every number, but we looked at it. There there is a justification. You could increase the irrigation slightly. I forget the water and wastewater. One went up, one would go down a little bit. The bottom line is it would be a marginal increase in revenue, but you'd have to do a full report. There's statutory requirements. There's limits on how quick you could go up. We don't think that juice is worth the squeeze at this point. You could do it. You'd need to spend money on doing a full report. And doing all that notification and legal requirements as well. So we don't recommend you touch that at this point. If you have other capital improvements for growth, then I think at that time you you do a full report. Questions?
Yeah, we're gonna jump into questions.
Yeah, Tony, first one. Your analysis in preparation of this is all three of these utility segments are on their own now. We're not having water subsidized sewer or sewer subsidizing irrigation or like first, correct?
Correct. They they will get there within the end of the phase. So we're phasing it down. We're not doing it all in one year, but yes, the plan is to get themselves sufficient.
Second question, you're indicating on the single family, the average irrigation at fourteen thousand gallons. We've got about four thousand, uh, single family customers. What percentage is operating? Because I think that I I thought that fourteen thousand was low. What percentage of our four thousand users are at that fourteen thousand gallon number?
Okay, so make sure I understand. You you have, you have your your indoor meters and how many of those that have the irrigation meters are at fourteen thousand? Yeah, fourteen thousand is the average. I I don't have the, I would just say the distribution tends to be a little bit wider distributed. Than the indoor use. Indoor use is very tight and the median is, I believe, a little bit less than four thousand gallons for the irrigation at fourteen. I don't know where the median is. My conjecture, it's it's pretty close to fourteen thousand. You do have some high users. I know that. You have a lot of low users and you have some that depends on the time of year. So it'll vary for a variety of reasons.
Okay, and then the other one on the potable water and sewer, which is based off the water, you're saying four thousand. This was my business for forty years. These are numbers that I was familiar with back in the seventies, eighties and nineties. This seems awful low. I know my own, and there's just two of us in the house and we're running. Right at seven thousand a month. This four thousand seems awful low.
It is low. I would just say compared to other providers in the area, they tend to have low. Part of it's the reason is the water bill and the sewer bill adds up and people tend to use less. You have an alternative irrigation, so that keeps. The outdoor from being in the indoor number. It is an average. There are users that use more, granted. But we're pretty confident in that number. Be be happy to scrub that or show you a distribution of bills.
Words is there is a table that shows like, uh, less than two thousand, two to four, four to six, four to seven. Seven to ten, ten to fifteen and over fifteen, and then shows the number of users in each of those brackets.
I have one question. The four thousand is is not per billing cycle. It's per month, right?
Yeah, it's per month. Yeah, the 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 issues when you do stuff is that a lot of times it gets down to your fixed costs versus your variable costs. Your fixed costs, you've got, you gotta generate that money through your your face. Meter a charge. Your variable cost just depends on who you're buying the the water from. We're buying it from Lee County. And we're subject to, they say, jump, we say, how high going up? So it's it's very, it's very critical on a potable water and sewer. That we have a real good knowledge of what our usage is because meter loss, we can't handle that. Because that just, money goes out of our pocket. It it's ridiculous. And I don't know, Leslie, have we done an analysis? Are we, we say below ten percent on our meter loss? A total meter used.
Ten percent is, yeah.
If we're under ten percent, that's 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 operating on pretty eight, pretty much eight cylinders. That's a good number. We get up fifteen percent and higher.
It varies throughout the year, but on average is below eleven, ten percent.
That's all I got. Thank you.
And just one other note, because I know Tony didn't mention it, but the irrigation tiers also changed compared to the prior. Or what is existing on the commercial side. It was an issue last year, so I just wanted to be aware that the tiers. Are being billed for irrigation based on the ERC factor.
Meter ERC factor?
So do we have any additional questions for Tony?
Good. Thank you.
Is there any, any specific action?
We just have to get the public hearing established. I think we were going to have that notice.
I just, I have a note that we need to set a date for the public hearing.
Yeah, for December second was the tentative date that we discussed.
Yeah, what we were thinking in in the group discussion was having the the hearing on December second, the rates become effective January one. And the notice, there's there's a couple statutory notice requirements. One, you have to send it out with the utility billing beforehand. So that works because the utility billing will go out on November fifteenth, so that'll be seventeen days in advance of the hearing. There's another statute that's a ten day notice in the newspaper. And so with the chart, I think the last time. And so we'll prepare that and coordinate with Tony H and Leslie and Laura on that aspect. So we were asking for December second at the present time.
Correct. Okay, all right, Leslie, thank you.
And so if the board could do that, that would be the request, we'd ask the board to set the public hearing date for December second, two thousand twenty one. To consider adjustments to the utility rates, fees, charges.
Do we need to make that motion?
Yes, sir.
I make that motion.
Have a second. Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Tony, for your.
Thank you.
We do have one more agenda item before we do the.
Turnover and conveyance.
Uh, so the the turnover and conveyance for Matarita Four has been discussed several times. It was last on the agenda on the sixteenth of September and we tabled it pending the unknown status of one of the storm pipes. Uh, it's my understanding that those, that's been taken care of and it's been recameraed and that camera work was delivered to Tetra Tech. And the approval of the turnover was dependent on the approval of the district engineer. So I'm hoping, looks like Stephen's still there.
Stephen, you guys approve this? Stephen, are you still on?
Maybe not. No one is muted.
Danny, anyone from Touchtag?
Do you have any reason to believe it didn't?
He didn't say that the camera, he didn't say that there was anything wrong with the camera. He said he received it. I did not get a report from him as far as if they had viewed it, if there are any issues or not. He just said he had received it. And I think it just got delivered, let's say, Tuesday, I think it was.
Well, let's just, we're gonna have to hold till we get.
So just table this till the twenty first?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick item. With regards to utilities, I know part of the discussion the board has had and part of the discussion that Rattell has had in their analysis. Was borrowing for the capital improvement program for utilities. And Stephen Bloom and I and Laura were talking the other day briefly, going back in a wayback machine. There was a bond issue back in eighty nine. Where they validated ninety nine million dollars worth of borrowing for utility projects. So we need to go back and look at that description of projects. To see if that would cover any new series of bonds to be issued for the capital improvement program for utilities. As opposed to another new validation.
Okay, yeah.
It's gonna save a lot of money and time.
Yes.
Any, any on the pool for consent agendas, A, B, or C?
B.
What do we need?
Yeah, one cover. Yeah, on B, at the last meeting, at the end, under supervisor deal, I asked about having a. Extension in the meeting and there was a discussion that we had some problems with, what was the word, forum? And that wasn't in there. And then I also indicated that I would be bringing in premier at the next meeting. And I didn't see any discussion of any of that under the. Minutes at all. And then the other one was is that I thought we had and understood that the park survey was gonna be put on the website. But I I haven't been able to find. Where I, where are we at on that park survey getting on the website?
It is not on the website yet. We actually, I posted the, something on the Facebook page. We've been getting requests for it through the customer care email. We've been sending it out. That way. It's because of the format it's in, I cannot post it on Facebook. It's a PDF. It only lets me do pictures of the length of it. Just won't allow it.
What, why can't we?
I can, but I have to make sure it's completed first before I do it. And right now, it's not.
Get it to me and I could get it out to the people.
I I can send it to you. That's fine. It's in your board folder too, in that shared folder. If anytime you want to pull it, it's in there.
I I can get it out to.
Okay.
Couple thousand people.
Mr. Tinkles, the two items that you, Nick, are not in the minutes, why goes in the minutes?
I can't hear you.
What'd you say? No, to the extent that Mr. Tinkles mentioned two items that he think believes were omitted from the minutes.
Yeah.
Table of minutes and then ask Marilyn to clearly and to bring those back for consideration at the next board meeting.
So table B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Table B. So do I have a motion to approve consent agenda A and C?
So move.
A second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. So we're at five twenty eight. Do, is there any supervisor comments before we move into, uh, German and then the office?
I just have one item. I'd mentioned at the last meeting and this one now, I would almost say, let's wait. If we get, uh, premier in, I think they would be very helpful on this. And that is is that we've got to get this capital reserve study going, both our. Regular operational account and our.
Well, that'd be a good task.
And that that'd be something they could help us on, so.
Let let them work with, let them, I'm sorry.
Hey, sorry, can I interrupt? This is Stephen Agapi from Tetra Tech.
Yes.
Hey, on action or four B action item, Adderita Phase Four. Um, at the last meeting, we talked about some outstanding items on the stormwater review. Since then, they provided evidence that everything's been taken care of, so we don't have any further comments. It's all good on our end.
So the vi- your your review of the video was was acceptable?
Yes, sir.
What I would suggest is that we have documented written report on that also, Stephen, to follow up in minutes.
Yes, of course, yeah. This just happened, I think, like yesterday or the day before, so I couldn't get it on the agenda.
Yeah, I saw that you got the video Tuesday, I think it was.
Yeah.
Prove. The turnover from Adderita Phase Four.
Well, and I want, and the. Well, and I want and the subject also to another correction of the interestingly, the verification of final call.
Oh, I have that.
Okay, but but it was not dated the first time around. In that or sign, excuse me, then it was signed with the date of
Twenty sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen by the engineer. And it certified, it says it's been contributed to Kyra County Utilities, Inc. So we need a current certification.
Marilyn has the updated.
With the with the present date?
Yes, I sent that to Marilyn. She updated the board book for the record.
Okay, I didn't see that. So so Brandon Sloan has done that?
Yes.
E.
So the only thing we need is just to hold until we get Stevens.
Written report.
Written report.
Or you can approve it.
Prove it conditioned.
Yeah, that's because Stevens said that he doesn't have any issues. He's gonna follow up with the.
I'd make the motion to go ahead and approve it based on receiving Stevens' report.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
You're welcome.
Any?
All right, thanks, guys.
Good timing there, Stephen. You just made it under the bell. Okay, any supervisor comments before we adjourn and or break into the workshop?
I have one.
So I I will.
Did Flavia, did you say you had one?
Okay, I'm sorry, Flavia, go ahead.
That's okay. I just want to follow up on the sidewalk project in front of Gateway Greens. Has the vendor going back and re level the area that we're having issues with the water?
Not that I'm aware of.
So can we have Kenny or or you follow up? There's two, and I think it's at least two places where seems to be retaining water.
Yeah, one was one was at the north end and one right about straight across from the entrance into the Commons Park.
Those in Gila Greens?
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, great. So do I need to adjourn the regular meeting?
Yes, then go and then convene, then before I have a recess, then convene the workshop.
Okay, so I will adjourn the regular meeting at five thirty-two. And then if everyone's fine, we can just roll right into workshop. So we're only seventeen minutes behind.
Fine with me.
Yeah, it's five seventeen minutes.
Well, that's pretty good.
What's the what's the format?
I'm waiting for it to come up. It's a, it looks like it's PowerPoint.
Yeah, Warren? Take five. You want it? We can take a quick five. I mean, you guys have been here long enough. You know, we should probably not show up till five o'clock. We're gonna take us a five minute quick recess while we get everything loaded up.
Uh, there was an arborist report that was mail emailed to the board oh several meetings ago, but no, there weren't any materials. No. You're welcome. Nope, there's just, I just checked that before I looked and there was actually a PowerPoint.
All yourself. The regular meeting is over.
Mr. Guy, you're not on mute.
Come on, you can sign.
You can sign the vacation.
This is the, this is the. Yeah, you can sign here. You want it before?
That's their form.
Uh, there's two, two test authorization in one change. This is this one I'm not concerned about sixty.
It's like a world service.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. And then he said to sign this, but I won't. I won't hand, I won't submit anything. Yeah. Oh, yeah, he's been, he's been really great. Father's actually. Yeah. Uh, I'm doing that one.
I wouldn't be surprised. There are a bunch of money out there.
Yes, our premium.
I print out everything except this time I had differently the.
They do that here one?
Yeah. George will do it for you. Just let her know that you wanted a book printed out.
I just, I print everything myself. Just read the key things and then the the big stuff like the rate report. We see always lose those over years. Just so I make a copy of it.
Just have Warren, tell the one that have George print here in a book.
I just sent her a deal, said in pages two, six, five, whatever.
I didn't know that. Okay, I put it online and I've been running my printer like crazy.
Oh, I have too, yeah.
Okay, okay. So let's go ahead and let's reconvene. So we'll jump right into the proposal. Laura, is that the format? Or the, yeah.
Going over the report.
You guys are on.
And just for the record before we kick in, can we just just briefly just give an overview of the scope, what was asked?
Yeah, where did where did this this come from? Chris decided to do this.
It came through as when we were having discussions around Oaks. Matter of fact, I think it came from a recommendation from you that we needed to have someone come in and.
Yeah, I didn't, I I know I made it, but I didn't know that we did it.
Yeah, and then I think Chris and staff engaged.
I learned some new words, lion's tail and things like that.
Yes, yes.
I I was glad to see a lot of the stuff in there. So it was it was very, it was very enlightening. I mean, so this Brian, the from the public work side had requested that we have an, we requested an arborist report to be completed at the direction of the board to go and evaluate the condition of the trees, not just the oak trees, but all of the trees in Gateway and give solutions for making sure that the trees are healthy and growing and what we can do to make Gateway great and keep our identity, but yet not have so much exposure to our infrastructure as well.
Is that the way you understood it?
Yes.
Okay. And if you would just just identify yourself and any additional parties that were involved in the report.
Okay, my name is Ronnie Simpson. I'm a board certified master arborist with Arborology Incorporated. That's my company. And basically, the that was the only company involved other than Rob with personal touch. He showed me the property and we wrote through and then I came out and and did the review myself.
Please let me know what you.
Basically, what we put together is a two step process. We we first, we looked at the trees from a maintenance standpoint. And basically what you guys have been doing for years is spending good money after bath. You've had the the pruning that's been done for probably since the beginning of the community has just been poor pruning practices, as I was saying before, lion's telling. Lion's telling is a practice of where your provider will come in and they'll clean all the sucker growth out of the interior portion of the tree. And then you stand back and the tree's open. It looks great, but the upper canopy of the tree, nothing's been done. So as you take all the lower growth of the tree, the tree forces growth out on the the tips, which then you wind up with what's called overextended branches. Overextended branches will naturally move in wind like this. They'll sway more and you have breakage. It it leads to defects in the tree. When when you prune a tree, you should have objectives. If you if you don't have an objective, then, excuse me, then you're just spending money. There is no such thing as pruning trees to make them look pretty. We, you know, we could all go out, look at a tree. We're all gonna have a different opinion. I could spend a year pruning it and we're still never all gonna agree on a pretty tree because it's impossible to to make a tree pretty in everybody's eyes. So when you're doing a pruning plan, you identify a reason for pruning. Going through Gateway, most of what I what I saw is we're going to look at getting fifteen feet over roadway so vehicles don't get damaged. Emergency vehicle, emergency vehicles get damaged, then they can build a community for the damages. So fifteen foot, I think fourteen foot, six inches is the required clearance. Go ahead and go to fifteen. Large deadwood, two inch and larger, that stuff that can fall and hit, you know, residents or guests, you know, walking in the community. Clearing lights, you know, that's that's important for security. Basically, looking at, you know, defects in the tree, major defects in the tree. How do you do the, how do you expect on the lighting? Because that's an issue, a bomb waiting to go off here. Our 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 street services, I am positive will not pass any of the tests for the lumens because of our trees. But how do you, the guy that's actually doing the work, or we write a specification, unless we write a spec that says he has to go out there and do a lumens test first and then give us a price to fix the trees to produce that lumen, how how else do you do it? Well, I mean. Eyeballing. Well, I mean, you you you, me, when I'm going through, yes, I was eyeballing. I can, you know, I don't know if it's in this slide, but I think it was in the in the pictures with the report. There, you know, there's one where basically, you know, there's trees all the way around a light pole over off one of the side roads. There's a a large live oak and there's not another live oak for fifty yards. And there's a light pole right beside it. And you can see where you guys have been pruning for years to keep the lights clear. Move the light. You know, keep the large tree, move the light. Get it out from under and then stop spending money on pruning. You know, do the do the expense once we're moving the light.
Sounds too much.
It it is. Well, your problem is is that our lights are on a spacing, so that doesn't work real well. But your problem is you move the light, you don't have any place to move it because now you take and screw up the spacing. The better deal is remove the tree. The trees are way too close. Well, I mean, in this, in this case, this is a, if, you know, a a tree that's in a very good location and it's a a very valuable large tree, it would, it would be absolutely a shame. The option of moving the light. Yes, I would agree with you. Yeah, one, one of the things that you guys have to understand about the management plan is I'm I'm the expert. I understand trees. You guys are the tree managers slash owners. All I give is is, you know, things for you guys to to say, let's go from here or here. Y'all can, y'all can go as far as do nothing to take every tree out, one extreme to the other. So, but going back to the identify reasons for pruning. If we can't identify a reason for pruning, then there's no sense in engaging the process. Then we we define the the objectives, what we were talking about. Lighting, line of sight, safety, you know, roadway, sidewalks, things of that nature. So now we've identified identified objectives, so we know what we're trying to achieve. Yeah, so then you consider the species, age and placement of the tree. So if we if we look and we say, and I'm gonna use an example, over roadways, let's say we decide we want to change our spec and say, we only want to do that once every eight or ten years. So let's get twenty foot clearance over the road. Okay, then we go through. Fortunately, you guys don't have a whole lot, but let's say you had lower oaks. Well, then we start looking at it. We're having to take larger limbs to get that twenty foot. So we're having to take these big twelve inch limbs, fifteen inch limbs. Laurel, we have to consider the species because they don't handle decay well. So as they're healing, that trunk's gonna decay. So that that large cut is actually a death sentence to that particular tree. So at that point, you look at it and say, if we do that, we've effectively set ourselves up for about twenty years for a major tree failure or a guaranteed removal. Do we have many of those? No, you don't have many of those, fortunately. So most of what you guys have are going to be, you know, sable palms, live oaks, you know, live oaks dominate the, you know, the community. They're very good compartmentalizers, so they can take aggressive pruning. One of the problems, you guys have a ton of defects because, like I said, all the pruning has been done to nip and tuck and kind of make people feel like, you know, hey, they made a big mess. We must have got a lot of value for our money. But none of the defects in the trees were removed. And at this point, you you can't remove the defects because they're too large. Yeah, I like to, I like to explain to people, when you, when you have a a three inch limb that that needs to come off. I mean, in some cases, that's a, that's a cut with a handsaw and throw in the back of a pickup truck. When you had a twenty inch limb that needs to come off because it's it's the defect, now it's a two thousand dollar job with a crane because it's over a roadway. So that that limb taken off, you know, thirty-five years ago at three inches, you know, is, you know, it's, it makes all the difference in the world. People have a misconception and I'm sure, I'm sure it's never been addressed here. When you plant trees, you should have a developmental pruning plan. That's where you get rid of defects in trees cheaply. You know, it becomes a pruner cut instead of a chainsaw cut. It goes in the back of a truck or a trash can instead of through a chipper. You know, so that's, that's when you really want to to focus on it. We always put trees in and then we walk away because they're young, they're small, you know. And then forty years later, we've got monsters. So it's where we're at. Absolutely. And then basically, we select the pruning system. In this case, the pruning system's gonna be a natural system. All your, all your trees look natural. In some cases, you know, if we were, if we were in between buildings or something, we may create a pruning system that would be unnatural, but we can, we can create it where it's healthy to where if you had two buildings growing and there's no tree here, we force the trees growth up. You know, in this case, you guys are in a natural system. So so the trees will mimic what they look like in in a a normal forest setting. Then we have to consider the amount, location, size of the cuts. That's important because that's where your specifications come in. That's why I addressed the the like deadwood, two inch and larger. You know, the the stuff smaller than that, we see that all the time. It's the stuff laying on the ground. It falls everywhere. People step on it. It breaks. That's not really gonna hurt anybody. So, you know, don't, don't spend a whole lot of money going after that. If you, if you get a provider that says, oh, yeah, we're gonna get all the dead wood out of your trees. No, he's not. And and then if you just spent that and you approved the the billing and now there's dead wood. I mean, you you didn't get what you paid for, but you signed off on it on a completed job. So at that point, you know, if the specification is there, it it can also protect you because you have a measuring stick to have him do the work by. The location of the cuts important. Going back to like the the concept of of the tree. Do we want to make cuts this big? Not if we can help it. Want to do a lot of small cuts. Live oaks are seventy-eight pounds per square foot. So a lot of small cuts out on the the outer canopy. Will we, you know, get a natural lift or up in the upper canopy, reduce a lot of weight, so we have a lot less movement. Everybody hears about, you know, storm pruning or hurricane pruning. No such thing. You know, there's really no such thing. You're not, I mean, if they, if a if a provider says, hey, we're gonna hurricane proof your trees, ask for a warranty. I I mean, seriously, I I I tell people that all the time, ask for a warranty. You can't hurricane proof a tree. All bets are off. When we do tree risk assessments, we base it on a average day of of about seventy-five mile an hour winds because that's what we get with an average bad thunderstorm. Anything over that, we we tell people that even healthy trees fail. We can't, we can't even start to guess what'll happen in a hurricane. Then the next step is gonna be write specifications so provider can follow the plan. That's the key thing. We do tree work the wrong way when we buy. That's the key thing. We do tree work the wrong way when we buy it. The person that is gonna do the work, he writes the scope, he does the work, he tells you when he's done, and it's time to pay. He has no measuring stick. No measuring stick whatsoever. So, you know, that that kind of leaves you guys vulnerable because if something was done wrong. Yeah, I've done, I've done several uh testimonies on uh improper tree work that's that's wound up resulting in injury. And it it winds up being a very ugly thing because, I mean, we we're guilty of our, of what we don't know.
So can you give us an example of a specification? Then you said, let's say fifteen feet clearance over roadways. What's another example of a specification standard?
Um eight foot clearance over over walkways, um basically uh nine to ten foot uh clearance on uh any structures. You guys don't have a lot of stuff over structures.
Anything like from a top, you know, I know you'd mentioned in order to promote uh streetlights, yeah, but anything like from a, like when you're promoting the white type of growth, being able to, you know, top a tree or what?
You don't top a tree.
I thought you said something about thinning up top.
You can thin, um but you you can thin, but that
But that's not what you're talking about with spec- specifications.
No, well, I mean, you can get into specifications. I mean, I could, I, if if we decided, going back to our objectives, which if, especially if we were looking at a- at developmental pruning, um or creating central leaders um in young trees, your trees are kind of too far gone to really get into that developmental stage. I mean, but we're, I don't, when was Gateway developed originally? Eighty eight, so, I mean, we're a, we're a lot of years out on on when we should have started that process. Um so they've got a long head start on us and you guys would be, you know,
We're accustomed.
But you guys would be, you know, um spending tons and tons of money to try to get something you're probably not gonna be able to achieve. So the specification there, what we would do is we try to create a central leader. So yes, we would make subordinating cuts. Um if you wind up in here having some co-dominant stems and removal is not an option, at that specific tree, we may look at and say, okay, that co-dominant stem, we're going to reduce the uh co-dominant stem back to a a lateral limb at least, you know, half of the main trunk size. The reason we do that is when you have co-dominant stems, most of the time they're growing at the same rate. You know, it's aspect ratio. If they're growing at the same rate, then they're they're competitive, competing, they're not, one's not supporting. So what eventually happens is is you'll have a failure with the two. You know, one of the others going to give. Um it's it's two, you know, two solid forces moving. So um then we look at other specifications, like I said, the two inch uh larger deadwood. If we're looking at lighting, maybe, maybe we say uh we we prune to have, you know, a tree fifteen feet from any, any light.
Yeah, that's fine. I I just wanted some examples and and you, did you look to see if we have specifications?
Uh, I'm not aware that you do have specifications.
So other than just
Yeah, that that's, that's where I was going. You're 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 familiar that, or you should be familiar, that the 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 word around the community is this, this is the uh uh Gateway Full Employment Act for tree cutters.
I'm not.
Report. It is.
Oh, okay.
It's it's already out. Uh I thought the report was X. It seems to me that our next step would be to retain somebody like you to come in and write a spec for us to be able to go out and manage our common areas where we have trees with the understanding that we have things like sidewalks that have issues with the roots. We know, we've already talked about the 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 twenty foot or the fifteen foot overhang. My HOA across the way is in constant trouble with uh South Trails on warnings, get them up, cut them up, get them up above fifteen feet. And then the last one is one that I'm worried about because our road still belonged to us. It belonged to the county. One of these days, they're gonna come out and hit us with that lumen deal. That your trees are causing all kinds of problems with lumens. We're not going to have the advantage of picking that tree up and moving it, or picking that light up and moving it. We do have one thing going for us is that we know that we gotta redo the wiring. I don't mind doing the wiring because it's old, but I sure got a problem with those poles. Those forty foot poles out there are expensive. So I wouldn't want to have to do many uh poles. I'd much rather hear your input on what we do with trees. And then the third, third thing that we've got, we just took out about fifty trees, fifty plus uh within the last year up on Gateway Boulevard because they were about to cause problems. Another one of those deals that somebody wasn't thinking, putting oaks, live oaks between the 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 sidewalk and a curb, just dump. We need to be doing something in the way of uh master planning and replacement. So that would be the third thing or the fourth thing that we need from a professional like yourselves. If you do that, you kind of just take your posi- yourself out of the position then that you wouldn't be able to bid the work.
I don't do tree work. I'm only a consultant.
Oh, then that's a, that's a rumor that's going around that we can dispel real quick.
Yes, I'll I'll glad, I mean,
You 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 have guy, you have guy cards in the game.
Nope, none at all. The the only, the only
Changes everything.
The only physical work that my company performs is we do uh disease uh diagnostics and uh plant healthcare on trees because nobody else
So then you're the professional that we truly are looking for to write our spec.
I don't, I don't make any money off doing tree removal or pruning. I sold my, I sold my tree business
And so here's, and and another piece that gets the most conversation and is the, you know, the most fiery is when you, you know, what Ed mentioned, the issue that we have with the oak, the placement. Where we have had a position or had been forced to have a position is when that root system starts to encroach on sidewalks, road systems, i- irrigation and infrastructure.
Well, and you know, and that's, it it all goes back to the original planning and tell you, you know, kinda, kinda go out, put yourself outside in in one of the mediums or in a grassy area here and picture the irrigation run. Right? And picture it hitting the sides of the trees and, you know, it's all over everything. The, the plan never took your largest plant in the landscape into account the day it was designed. It was designed to maximize turf. Okay, so trees and turf don't mix well because they're plants that compete for the same resources. So the 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 watering to have your turf created your surface roots that are damaging your your surface infrastructures. If trees don't have to go deep for water, they're not going deep for water, but their roots are still going to grow to sustain the the size of the the tree.
Well, your report basically is is pretty uh telling that we've got some uh issues in front of us.
Absolutely.
We've got some issues in front of us that we need to have somebody come in and I don't care whether we take it uh Gateway Boulevard or Comish Lakes or Griffin, preferably, all of them. Where we have common areas that have trees, we need an evaluation of what we need to do to address each one of these three or four or five problem areas. Why are, like you said, why are we going out and getting requests for proposals to do something that is, is just burning money?
But I mean, and a great example is, we had a gentleman here earlier today that presented a petition with four hundred signatures to the board that basically was calling out protection for the oaks. You know, so again, that's, you know, so we're, we're trying to do two things. One, there is let's call it an aesthetic standard that we have. The can- the canopy is a part of who we are. And I think most people that live here would say they like the canopy, most people. But we have a a different, um we also have a responsibility to maintain infrastructure, sidewalk and roads.
It's called a duty of care.
Absolutely. And so when we talk about the amount of dollars that it takes to, you know, uh continue to repair and most importantly mitigate risk versus the aesthetic beauty of a tree, that's where it gets a little touchy.
Like root damage on sidewalks.
No, I
Yep, no, I to- I totally understand. Just, you know, I advocate ninety nine point nine percent of the time to save trees. That that is, that is my ultimate goal. But I do understand my opinion on whether a tree should be saved or not is not my opinion to have. It's the owner of the tree. I give, I give the facts. Again, like I said, you can go as far as from one extreme to the other, do nothing at all or get rid of it. I'm gonna tell you everything in between that are all your options to mitigate those and let you make informed decisions.
Well, I appreciate the information you had in there that shows how short sighted Westinghouse was here. Planting trees like every fifty feet, twenty feet, the spacings that were ridiculous. But the one that ticks me off the most is you go into your additions like mine especially, which is the oldest one in the community. Every other uh lot line is where your utilities are at. Be damned if they didn't put an oak on every other one and it's the same every other one.
I've got one
It's kinesis.
Three feet from my driveway. It's ripping it up.
But those are, those are type of things that on our side, people come in, get permission, go through our DRC and we remove the tree. Here, we got a little bit different deal because we have the common area and we have other issues and other outsiders, for example, Lee County DOT. They're gonna come out one of these days, they're gonna tell us, guys, bite the bullet and get this fixed.
Well, you you know, and to be perfectly honest with you, can we, can we move forward in slides? We've kind of covered some of the things in the slides. So here, I I'm gonna go, I'll go over this. I I wanna go back to the the DOT. If you guys look at this, this is what I'm, what I'm talking, you see how the tree has just been extremely thin? And then on both of those, that forces all the growth out. So you see, you have this big li- leader there, the limb on the right, that big huge thing, that was about a a twenty six inch leader. And it's going out and it just keeps adding weight to the end at seventy eight pounds per square foot. We're asking for trouble. If the tree can put on, uh is allowed to to establish some of those interior uh branches, the trunk will, will slow down its growth outward. For every, for every, you know, action, there's a reaction. And so every, I mean, every time we cut off a limb, it's gonna, it's gonna put what it needs back on. We're never gonna beat mother nature with that. All we're gonna do is spend good money and create problems for ourselves. Can we get the next one? Here's a co-dominant stem.
No, that kind of a tree's all over Gateway.
Yep, yep. And again, that's, that's, you know, that tree went in with that defect. If if the trees were put in in nineteen eighty eight, that tree went in in nineteen eighty eight. Um I could have, I could have made that cut in nineteen eighty eight and thrown it in a trash can. Now, um I I don't, I I'm so far
We're just waiting for that tree to split.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. There's a stress crack already in it. Um it's called included bark. I mean, it, just waiting, it's right along the roadway.
That's over that Fairway Lakes office park.
You know, but uh but yeah, it's it's just, is is, you know, it's just a matter of time.
Those are dime a dozen. They're everywhere.
And and the thing about it is, is you don't, you don't necessarily have to remove the tree. Again, maybe, maybe we start slowly reducing that one co-dominant stem until we, until the, and allow the, we get it down to a point and allow the 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 remaining stem to start growing over. And by the time it's gone, nobody will remember it was there.
Sounds like the co-joined babies at birth. Which one, which one, which one, which one, who do you take?
Billy and Bob. Yes, ma'am. There you go, that's a, that's Yeah, now that that bottom limb to the left, they've, that's just been getting, you know, basically stripped. That uh, that limb was at the same height when that tree was planted. The limbs don't grow up, they don't get any higher. So that was a temporary limb from the beginning. If if we would have determined that we wanted fifteen feet over the roadways in nineteen eighty eight and eight foot or ten foot over walkways, we could have taken small limbs then, again, with that, with hand snips. And all we'd be doing now is dealing with the weight that winds up on some of the outer limbs where they start to get heavy and droop. Um but that's an overextended branch. So you, tha- that's everywhere in the community. Next slide. All right, now, why remove seemingly healthy trees? Is the tree over mature? What it, what's an over mature tree? Well, anybody here ever went and seen the Angel Oak in Charleston?
The what?
The Angel Oak in Charleston, South Carolina.
Just was up Charleston, but I don't know what it is.
Okay, it's a fifteen hundred year old live oak. It's a, it's, it's a massive live oak. That tree is in a natural wood setting. Is it over mature? Yeah. It, does it have branches that fall off? Yeah. How do they protect the fu- public from it? They put a fence around it and say it's trespassing if you go in over the fence. But we couldn't have that tree in Gateway. So what should have been done? Yep, that's saying Angel.
Oh, yeah.
Sidebar, I actually have been able to climb and prune that tree. So uh that's one of my claims to fame, that uh you you gotta be very, 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 very lucky to get the opportunity to do that. But um so in nineteen eighty eight, when any tree was put in the ground, an effective life of that tree should have been put in place. Because we can't have sixty inch trunks in the middle of the the roadways. You know, we, you, we can't, we can't have, you know, if they use Washingtonians, we can't have a hundred and twenty foot Washingtonians, you know, like they do in California swaying back and forth. You know, so a tree in a landscape, you have to have an effective plant, just like you do with shrubs. You know, hey, the, we're
How do you do that at our age?
Uh you do it, you do it with your, as you go through and you start removing and replacing.
Start doing it.
Yep, you start doing it with the new ones, and that doesn't mean every old tree has to come out.
But do you tag, physically tag trees to uh to keep track of all this?
Well, and he's, here's the bigger question. What do you replace? And there is
You need to replace.
Well, well, but I think the question is, there's, there's a identity to those oak trees in this community. So if you do a selective remove and replace,
Replace this place else.
But what do you, what do you replace it with?
What could you? You can, you can go back with a live oak if you have an effective lifespan of the live oaks and you have an ongoing removal replacement program for that.
Yeah, in a different location.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my point, and and I think that's, I, that's my ignorance has come in is, is like, o- oaks are bad, oaks are bad.
No, oaks are great trees.
To a certain, to a certain extent, right?
Well, I mean, it it comes, it comes down, it goes back, it's subjective based. What are our objectives? If you, if you like that canopy look out there, live oaks are gonna give that to you. Drawback, you're gonna have leaves, um you're gonna have a big tree. What you're not gonna have is a whole lot of health problems. Um you're not gonna have, you know, random branches falling because the tree grows, you know, extremely fast. But you have to manage it and you
So we could ma- I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can maintain a canopy in theory with, with a remove and replace. So if we, there's an oak in a damaged area or that's, you know, that is damaging, road, whatever, due to, you know, uh root growth. You're saying we could, in theory, remove that and replace it with an oak in that same area if it's maintained properly.
If, if, if the area is suitable.
What, what killed us were the oaks in the median. That was a mistake. There should have been some other kind of tree, you'd still get the canopy. You weren't gonna get it instantaneously, they just don't grow that fast. But we now have a great canopy and we don't even need that median.
We got mixed, we don't, we got mixed oak and palms and you're not getting the value of either one.
Well, the palms in the median would be easy because it, the most of the palms are not a problem when it comes down to all the issues of tearing up the roads and sidewalks and site distances aren't, are are involved. But the oaks on the side will create your canopy, that's all you need.
Well, what I was saying, we've got, in some places, we've got palms next to oats.
Oh, yeah, right next to it.
And they're, you know, you can't, you don't, can't appreciate the beauty of these.
Just, just like the golf club, the golf club just put in yesterday, new Bismarcks. I I almost took a picture because of tonight and I thought, no, I'll just catch hell if I do it. Bought a brand new Bismarck, stuck it on the ninth hole right off the the uh number four tees. I'll be damned if it isn't under two sixty foot oak trees. I I never seen anything so stupid in my life.
It'll grow to forty five foot itself.
It's gonna go right into those oaks. Like, why would you do that?
Well, now, now, and it just in in that, the, it it kind of, kind of goes in into part of what we're talking about here. Bismarck palms are native to Queensland, Australia, or uh to, excuse me, to Madagascar. So that's another, that's another thing to keep in mind when planting trees. The, the, the need for nutrients, saying care and things like that, making sure they're native. Um, I mean, I see the, the city of Cape Coral, they've, they're trying to extend their, uh, fertilizer ordinance from four months to six months, but yet all of their median work is including non-native palm trees that need fertilized three or four or five times.
They've got them everywhere.
Yeah. And they need fertilized three, four, or five times a year. But yet they wanna, they wanna extend the fertilizer blackout. So, um, so they're stepping on their own feet.
Which, you don't get both. Right. I don't want to, I know we're, we're asking a lot of questions.
No, it's good, that's good.
But is there other key points that you wanna try to get through?
Yeah. Um, basically, I'm gonna run through these kind of quick. Is the tree the wrong tree for the location? In some cases, yes. In between the sidewalk and the road, yes. In the median, not, not one hundred percent. Was it planted in the wrong location in the median? Yes. Should it have been moved to the center? Yes. How will trees react to its surroundings? When you put live oaks right on top of live oaks, they're gonna compete for light. One's going to win, one's going to not win. So you're gonna have one growing like this. So you can't, I mean, so then when one has to go, you see where you took the ones out here, everything's growing back that way. And it'll be, it'll be another twenty years before you get a good canopy back this way. How big will the tree get? I mean, that's, that's one of the biggest questions you have to ask. And that's why you need an effective life of, of the tree. If you determine, hey, this is a twenty-year tree, this tree can live for fifteen-hundred years, but in this community, it's a twenty-year tree. Then we know that, we know, you know, January first of, of twenty-twenty-two, we put it in January first of twenty-forty-two, it's coming out.
The drip line on these oaks is just unbelievable, just huge. We had one on the golf course that was a, a big one, a big one. We took it up on, on thirteenth hole. And that root system was just, no wonder we didn't have any grass in the fairway. The thing was, is almost seventy-five, eighty feet across. Nothing ever grew there.
And you, I mean, we can, once we, once we get deeper into it, we can look at chemical control as well. There's growth regulators and things of that nature, uh, that can.
And the root pruning.
Root pruning, I mean, um, you can do it on a live oak, you have to be very, very careful. Um, that will open a tree up to, uh, potentially, uh, being invaded by ganoderma, um, and ganoderma.
Got that here.
Yep. So, well, it's naturally occurring in the soil. Um, and a lot of probably what causes you guys is.
Mostly the palms here.
Yeah, a lot of probably what causes it is, is weed eater damage to the tree. And then it gives it, you know, an entrance because do you guys, are you guys on reclaimed irrigation?
Yes.
So, yeah, then it's flowing happily through your irrigation as well. So, I mean, so spray the tree that the weed eater just damaged and, you know, us and Mother Nature, like I said, we won't win.
Or pour gas at an open wound.
Yep. Does the tree have a history of failure? Going through the community, look at trees that have a history of failure, um, and record those histories. You know, um, tell, you know, when you're, when you're looking at trees, you know, talk to, you know, why, the Bismarck, you know, um, what do we know about the Bismarck? Well, needs a lot of nutrients, palm weevil problems, we, all of a sudden, does it have a history of failures? Failures aren't just the tree breaking and, and falling across the road. Failure could be, it, it, you know, it failed at life. Back with Irma, uh, we saw a lot of trees come down and it wasn't the tree's fault, it was the fact we had so much rain. And the, the soil, the soil failed, it was called root slippage. That, you know, we, we didn't see those big root plates come up, we just saw trees come out and they had these little, little root shoots off of them. The soil could not hold the roots. Um, are there conflicts of infrastructure pedestrians? Here, you've got it everywhere. So that's an important, uh, uh, thing to manage. Does the tree risk outweigh its value? Um, it, I mean, I'm gonna.
Touchy one.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is, it's touchy. I mean, and that's, that's where as the tree owners slash managers and, you know, you guys have to do your best job of, of duty of care. Because, I mean, you can say, hey, it's going, and I'm just using, it's gonna cost us five thousand dollars to take that tree down, I'd rather keep the five thousand dollars and, you know, and then, you know, it fall on somebody next week. You know, I mean, that's, that's the important fact there. Next slide, please. Here's an area, um, that there's just, I mean, there, it's just, you got trees in between the sidewalk and the road. Um, now you were talking about, I don't, is DOT, is that a DOT road right there? Okay. So DOT in state of Florida, um, through the, uh.
Lee County DOT.
Well, it's, yeah, it, it, it still falls under state rules. Uh, so what winds up happening is, is anything within five foot of the roadway has to be breakaway.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So in, in theory, you're getting close with some of these. Um, but the, but the, but the logic is with some of them, do we, do we wait another ten years when the trunk has grown large enough that it is there? And now we, we spent, we waited ten years and spent another two thousand dollars to remove that tree.
And the potential of damage at the same time.
Right. Well, I mean, we know the tree's gonna grow. So if we, if we identify the tree now that'll be a risk in five or ten years and has to be, we're saving ourselves a lot of money by doing it now.
Plan for it.
And then here, you have a good location, the trees behind the shrubs, for the most part, they can stay. And then if you want that oak alley, because again, we're looking at, we're, we're having to look at the future, we can't, you know, we can't instantly get it. So maybe, maybe we do them over there where the palms are. You have a bit, that, that big, huge open area right there, you could get them, you know, fifteen foot off the roadway over there. So, I mean, there were a lot of opportunities to create a beautiful place that, that would've not ever been much of a problem. Um, or would've been limited problems. But they just left so many open spaces and they stuck so many trees in bad spots because they were little trees and, and it, nobody, nobody thought twenty years down the road.
Well, this is Griffin Drive and there was no planning for landscaping on Griffin Drive to begin with.
Right.
It's a joke. That picture you just had is just right over here.
Here, here's a location, nice tree. I mean, this is one I would advocate, trees in a good spot. Um, not gonna bother anything. If you can move the light, move the light, problem solved. Um, tree gets to stay, light gets cleared, you don't spend money on clearing for the light anymore, it's a one-time expense, it's over with. Um, I think the next slide will show how far, or, no, here's an area, um, there is just, there's not much you can do there. Um, you already got sidewalk damage. I mean, I, I understand, everybody loves trees, I love trees. Um, but nobody will be the one that loves the tree when they're the ones that break their neck on it.
Oh, I thought the, the new one I'm seeing is the, uh, Tree Root Bridge. You seen that one?
Yep.
But I, I mean, that, you're talking about, if I had money to go out and burn, I might consider that.
I think, I think I have some of that in the report. There's.
Crazy.
Yeah, yeah. Those are some options. You guys, you guys have shifted, it looks like, in some spots, if you can, anywhere you can shift the asphalt, it's easier to repair and it's much cheaper, you know, unfortunately, in a lot of these areas, you, you can't. Um, you know, this area here, I mean, they went between the road and the, the sidewalk there with the trees, planted them about twelve foot on center. And then we had that big area right there that we could've planted in, in between a lake and, and the, the sidewalk. I mean, and those, those trees could've been planted, you know, twenty-five foot on center. And those trees would be massive, shading that area, shading the lake. I mean, and they would probably be, you know, close to, with no competition, close to, you know, the edge of the road by now. So. Um, this is one that's already been hit. Um, as you can see there, that's a rather small live oak. Um, it was hit hard. I don't know, uh, I don't know the, the history of that accident. But the tree fare well, I guarantee you the car did. Um, a little story on live oaks, if anybody's ever been to Gulf Breeze, Florida, up in the Panhandle, there's a place called the Naval Live Oaks. Um, George Washington commissioned the growing of live oaks because the crotches were used in making of battleships. Um, and they never had to harvest them because we moved to steel hulls before the trees were mature enough. But, so the naval live oaks are up there, um, and the, they used the battleship back then for ramming. So that's what they, they use, that's what was, the battleship were made out of. So imagine a car hitting that. Yep, here's a, here's another one. Um, you know, conflict with roads and people. Um, both of those, strangely enough, were side by side. I don't know if it was the same accident, um, or if it was two separate accidents. Um, again, the tree, uh, the tree took a hard blow because it knocked the bark off of it and the, but the tree pretty much laughed at the car. Um, so even the small live oaks are not going to give much. Um, those are small and they're, they were, if, if I remember correctly, they were right at six or seven feet from the edge of the road.
They're close.
Yep. Is that the last one? Okay.
So I think what we're, and this is, really appreciate the effort that went into it. I, I learned actually quite a bit, um.
I learned a lot reading the report, it was interesting.
Um, you know, so I think for us, one, we need, we need specifications.
We need.
First, we need a, we need a vision. We need to understand what we're, what we're trying to, what we're trying to, you know, uh, maintain and build specifications to that. And then I think the, one of the areas that we have a current gap is just an ongoing plan. And that plan is both maintenance, it's also repair and replace. Um, so there's just, there's a lot to it. And I think there's just, there's gaps and it's been beyond kind of our, our, you know, span of control. Cause I think our first instinct is, hey, you know, hire someone to come out and prune. Um, and without proper direction, we're leaving that up to the interpretation of the, of the vendor doing it. And we just, you know, we hope that they're, you know, that they're visualized with ours, but there's, there's no way, and there's no way for them to know either.
Right.
I'd like to have them just give, they, they know the community, come back out now and give us a proposal for what you guys would do to create what you just discussed, a specification and a plan for the community.
And I.
Before we spend any more money cutting trees or doing anything, let's.
Or even replacing.
Or replacing. So right now, we've got the opportunity, and this is not unlike some of the people think that you're, you're, you're patting your pocket with something that's gonna come out, you're not doing that, that's great. So have somebody that's, uh, uh, certainly got the credentials to give us a proposal, uh, for going to the next step. I think we need it and we need it badly.
Uh, so Bob, Flavia, any, any comments?
Oh, I love, yeah, this was not in the pack.
It was really good. Uh, it was a lot of information. Um, I appreciate it. No questions. I think it's pretty good.
So if you'll, if you'll come back to us maybe with a, a bit of, you know, what?
A proposal for.
Proposal for what the next step.
Preparing.
And I'd say, if you could operate under the assumption that our primary intent is to maintain the existing integrity within Gateway, everyone agree, that's kind of what we want, you know, so how does that work? So if you do, you know, if, if there's areas to plant new growth, do we do it with oaks? Do we do it with, you know, other native, uh, you know, trees that might still fit in with our.
Canopy type trees, but not necessarily.
Whether it's canopy or just stays in with our aesthetic, you know, theme. Uh, and what does that look like? And because there's gonna be a portion, probably a large percentage, uh, of people in the community that the first thing they're gonna say is, we're cutting down trees, you know, or, yeah, and so, you know.
Well, one of the things to remember is, as you, as you have a lot of trees that are currently competing. And if you, for instance, some of these areas where the trees were twelve foot on center, okay? We may determine all of those trees in that area, in between the sidewalk and road, have to go. But that don't mean all of them have to go on day one. Maybe, maybe we come in and we, we take every other one, we widen that gap and we, we pretty much keep what we have.
Your issue is you've got a plan.
Yes.
That's what we don't have now. Right now, what it is, it's just a shotgun approach.
Right.
And it, it's not working. It's not working.
Well, and, and, you know, I mean, and that's, that's the thing about it. I mean, it's, it's just like, it's just like any other plan, your, your roadway, your, your landscape maintenance. I mean, um, I mean, i- if it, if you're, if you're deciding, you know, if you got, if you got a bid last week for, you know, a hundred thousand dollar re-landscape package and you're bidding on it this week, that, that wasn't, that wasn't a good plan. Um, I mean, you should've had, I mean, that, that should've been three years ago. And so.
Well, we really, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, that's very important, that's a very good report.
I wish Matt would've been here.
The word, the words on the street I've already heard. I, I was wondering when the petition was coming.
But we, this is, we did record it, right? And so.
And I'll be, I would be more than happy to come out and if, if you wanna do a community forum.
I think that's. That's, I was, I was thinking that same.
Especially if he comes in and gets right off the bat, a, a vision of, just say, one, maybe one area or two areas to, to demonstrate what is coming, so that there's not any.
Finally got a plan and a vision.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Not only.
You know, and, well, yeah, it's knee-jerk. And like I said, I mean, ju- just like when the trees were planted, nobody looked twenty years down the road. Everybody has to be looking twenty years down the road now, when one turn. Yeah. I mean, because, I mean, you, even the people that are upset, they're, they're gonna be upset that a tree's gone. But when a tree goes back in that spot, oh, it's a small tree. Yeah, well, you know, when you, when you leave your house to your, your children, you know, and they're, they're living out here, you know, do you want them to be the ones footing the bill for?
Or say, why didn't they take care of this when they knew better?
Or if you do a systematic approach where you're, you're putting in new growth along with mature growth, it's not as visible and that's the way it wanted to go.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm an architect.
Okay.
And I love you, right? And, um, I think your report's great. I think what I heard today, I would show it to my people.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, Matt being one of those high people. Uh, I think one of the things is the word trust, you know, we've got, we've got bureaucracy, we've got government. And, and I don't think we play by nature now trust.
I understand.
Right? So we're, the plan is gonna be the thing that's gonna help sell. I'm, I'm for taking down trees and don't worry, they're tearing up things and doing all the stuff that, you know, the two hitch that he's got. I think one of the things that happened, just an observation that happened, was we took down a bunch of trees the past, let's say, six months. From the swimming pool on up to.
And, and no question.
Stony, Stony Brook. A lot of trees came out of there and people didn't see a plan for.
Right.
And that, so they see bare, bare.
Yep.
They look the other direction and we're going toward Daniels and they're seeing our canopy, the trees that are, you know, fifty trees in place of where they could've done it, probably ten.
Yep.
Right? And, and those trees are tearing up stuff and some of them aren't tearing anything yet.
Right.
But they will in the future, right? So people are going, they're gonna cut down all these trees and they're not putting any back.
Yep.
And I was an architect when I was working for them. And every time we took down a tree, we had, we, we made a decision to put one back. So if they start, you start to have a plan from, you know, from the churches down to Gateway and say, we're gonna take out these twenty trees or thirty trees and whatever, and we're gonna put back trees over here. And you see something, you know, it's almost like you could do it with a drone, I, I think, or, or, or just a drive down through there and mark, start marking where the trees are. But, you know, like you would have to do to make.
Right.
I think a rendering would be nice, something visual.
See that, people come and see that, you guys aren't for tearing out every tree and.
Yeah. I mean, last, last thing we wanted to do was tear trees.
And, and the other thing too is.
Well, see, I heard all that and I can all appreciate what you're doing, what you're trying to do. And I'm just trying to give you some insight and maybe, you know, a little.
No, I, I think that trust is.
We won't get hung much. I mean, I don't think this group, the group has signed that petition. You know, I think that they're just wanting to make sure that people are, you know, we're, we're looking at each tree individually, not just as a group. Having, having the thing that says, anything that's got a canopy that's lower than fifteen feet, that we can get rid of.
Ninety, ninety-nine percent of the time, I, I am, I am in that group and would've signed that petition. On indi- on individual trees as a blanket, no way. Because the one question I would ask them, I would ask anybody that was willing to, to, you know, tie themselves to a tree and says, not coming down.
Yeah.
Okay. If we have, if we have something that happens, let's say it's gonna cost ten grand to, to take the tree down. We have an act and we, we don't wanna do it for, for, because of the tree, because of the money, whatever the reasons become. We have an accident, howdy, something like that. The logic becomes somebody like me, I come out and say, you know, of course I wouldn't if I was working with you guys, but another arborist, he comes out and says, yeah, that tree should've been going, you know, gone long ago. And, and the tree's still coming out, now we, now we have an accident, everybody's opinion changes.
Well, a lot of people don't understand up on that north end too, we have six-hundred-and-sixty-foot FPLEs, but the, the, the trees you put in there can't go over fifteen feet.
Right.
So you're limited.
Right.
You're gonna, you're gonna put many trees in that and it's on an angle, so it's not really six-hundred-and-sixty feet, it's about like nine-hundred feet.
So.
Uh, one of, one of.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it. And I love the trust comment, cause I think you're, you're absolutely spot on. Yeah, I think you're spot on.
Kind of let the community get involved, like you were in a workshop.
Yeah.
And come up with a plan.
Then you got.
Yep.
Because we want, we all want the same thing.
Another key thing to keep in mind is, is when the, when the community was developed, the, the master plan was put in place, and they come out and they clear. Then the city or, or, or the county came in and said, okay, you took out trees, you gotta replace trees. So we, they have a mitigation process.
It's in the county, that's in our plan.
Yep, so, but here's what winds up happening, so, and I'm just gonna use this for a number. So let's come in and say, in the beginning, which it was way more than this, but you took out a thousand caliber inches. And the city says, why are mitigation prob, uh, uh, calculation is, is you gotta put in two thousand inches. Okay, great, you put in two thousand inches. Forty years later, you got two hundred thousand inches. They don't look at it as canopy density, they look at it as caliber. That's a flaw in the, in the county system. That's why you go, that's why you go.
You're not planning for a twenty year span.
Right, that's why you go buy a shopping center, and the trees are pruned down under the power lines, and they're pruned up so they can see the store.
Which way?
And there's a tree every three feet, because it was, we got, this is a big place, and we've got, you know, a lot of parking lots, so we gotta put, you know, a thousand inches of trees in here. In twenty years, we got two hundred thousand inches of trees.
Think about that.
So, so it, it should be about how much canopy did you remove and how do we get that canopy density back? So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
For everyone, um, I'll call the, the workshop adjourned if I need to at six thirty-two, so.